Get started now because we have a long afternoon in front of us. The first item is if any school board member would like to have any comment before we get into the items for today.
Well, I, as you know, we've been doing a weekly call on Fridays about what's going on in the legislation. And right now, it's very confusing because some bills have passed the Senate, but they haven't passed the House, and so it's all about this week. Some of these bills that we've been watching may just die. And they don't know which ones are going to die and which ones are going to go forward. The biggest thing right now is the budget, though. The Senate budget is much better for education than the House budget. And as you probably read the paper and I got notification from Ruth, there's even a bigger divide between the two. If you know influential people, tell them to encourage the Senate bill passing, I mean, the Senate's budget passing, because we're going to be in trouble with the House. I personally feel we're going to be in trouble if the House gets their budget, because you know, we got less per pupil this year than we got the year before. And if they change our DCD again, which could happen, we will be in the same shape this coming year. So that's the biggest, that is the biggest issue right now, is the budget. For the other bills, there's good bills, there's bad bills, but we'll know at the end of this week which ones most likely will be going through and which ones will die, because the House and the Senate aren't together on many of those either. So they're anticipating a shortfall in the future, and that's what is pushing not giving much money. They're trying to store money for this upcoming state fall. And so that's my report, and I'm assuming we'll have another conference call this Friday.
And the sellers, did they say where they think the shortfall is coming from?
No, they just said that especially the House, this is why they are wanting, they're wanting to put money in reserves, so they're not wanting to fund education at a higher level. Or, you know, we're one of the biggest, they have to fund Medicaid. And although they did get word the LEP money, that low-income pool, they're going to get 1.5 billion from the federal government this year, which I don't think they were counting on before, so that's something that would help us in the fact that they've got that money to go for Medicaid. But I've heard this several times about they're anticipating a future shortfall, and they want to put money in reserves. So we'll see, but right now, if you read the paper this morning, the split's bigger than ever between the House and the Senate, and they may have to go into special sessions that we may not know until close to the end of the year, where our vote will be, like mixture. But anyway, they both want tax cuts, but the House wants a larger house, larger cut, and it's involving the RLE rollback for the House. Anyway, that was the good news. The only, the only positive thing, there is a bill going where we're going to get help with legal fees. I guess they're going to limit the legal fees on the public records request when people make huge public records requests just because they can make them, and we don't get them out on time, and then we have to pay court, we're sued over it. They're doing some legislation to try to ease that. So that was, that was a little positive note that we talked about Friday. But other than that, that's, they're just watching all the bills, and right now, they don't know which ones will be going through, but by this week, many of them will die this week, and we'll know which ones will be possibly passed for next week. And next week is the end of the regular session. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Just picking up on what Hazel said about what may or may not come out of, I mean, there, there's a lot of pretty significant charter legislation, charter-related legislation coming out of that, which I think is going to bear somewhat on this discussion we're about to have today. I don't think any of us know what chaos is coming out of schools of hope, or whatever you want to call it, and how that's going to play into, you know, our ability to do wraparound services. There's just a million things that could happen, and I do think that's something to keep in mind in the discussion we're having today. The other thing I wanted to raise is, I got an email, I think everybody else did too, I don't know, last night from a parent, the chairman of the SAC committee at Horizons I didn't even understand that Horizons was involved in this zoning. They're certainly not happy about what exactly is happening there. I, they didn't understand this. But additionally, you know, since we had this presented a few weeks ago, I've visited Philip O'Brien and seen exactly how far kindergarten is going to be bused there if they're not in the Cumbi Act of School. I, I try to be constructive on these things. I know, I know there's been a lot of work put into this, and, but I don't see how I can support this. I, I don't, I don't like this plan. I don't like the way we're moving kids around. This plan way predates me, and I guess I'm probably going to, I don't know how to fix it, honestly, but I'm probably going to vote against it today. I had originally thought I wasn't. The more I've thought about it, the more I've looked at it, and I think that note last night, you know, I just want everybody to know, to know that.
Yes.
And I had some similar concerns. I mean, the parents is asking the question, will my child get the same opportunity as the students, I guess, from her school? Can we, can we do that? Is that a possibility? It seems like that's a valid concern. And I guess the other question is, are there any other options? I mean, I know we've talked about it extensively, and a lot of work has gone into this, but is there, is there, is there a better option? Are there other options that might work better, do we know? Is that a question for somebody from SAP?
It is. It is.
This is on the agenda. We need to just let the agenda flow, and then once we get to that piece, then we can have discussion on that.
Okay, that's fine. How was the session raised in that?
That's okay, no problem. All right, so any other comments from board members? Okay, if not, the first item on our agenda would be the McLaughlin discussion. And Ms. Bird, you're going to have SAP to come up?
Yes, Melissa Gray will come up. Melissa has gathered all the information which you received from the questions that were gathered by the board members. She will then go over some of the information, and then she'll open it up to the entire board for your discussion.
Good afternoon. As you all are well aware, on February 14th during your work session, Mrs. Cunningham voiced a request from the Lake Wales community that the district consider turning over the McLaughlin Middle School to their charter group. After discussing the request, it was decided that board members would submit their questions or concerns to the superintendent. You all have been given a list of compiled questions and answers, as well as backup data, in order to facilitate your discussion today. I am here to capture any additional questions that you may have. This weekend, you all have a packet that's relatively large. In there, you have a list of all of the staff members that were involved in providing the answers to the questions that were submitted. If there are questions that fall outside of the ones that, or questions that fall outside of the answers that we've already provided, you can refer to that list, and I will certainly be able to go back to those points of reference for additional clarification or additional answers for you. You also have in front of you the questions, you submitted 30 questions, and so we worked very hard to put together answers for all 30 of those questions. We also provided you on a CD backup data. That backup data was pretty intensive, and so that's why it wasn't printed out for you, because it would have been 400-plus pages of data. So we gave that to you, so that if you wanted to manipulate that data, search data, you had all of that readily available to you. We did include some attachments to this document. You have attachments one through eight. Some of them were, you may have printed for you, others you may not have, just because of the, how big they actually were once you started printing them. I think there was one document that was 136 pages in data. So again, if you wanted to reference those, we wanted to make sure that we had everything provided you. Is there anything that I can, I can capture for you for clarification purposes, that I can take back to staff? I'm here, I guess, more as a facilitator than as the person of the point of contact for your answers, because you have those answers in front of you, but whatever it is that I can take back to staff on your behalf, I'd be happy to do that for you.
Ms. Townsend?
The current school grade for McLaughlin is?
A D.
And are they on the state's list and in the queue?
No.
Are they on the state's list for takeover this next year?
If their grade doesn't improve, then they enter into a different category.
So when would the next grade be out for us to know that answer?
From what we're hearing, school grades could be the end of June or July.
So with that information, this conversation is really premature, because we don't have the information needed for the staff to make a recommendation to the board and for us to know what direction we have a need to go in. So my question, I guess, for the whole audience, why are we even at this point if we don't know yet what the school grade is, to know if there is even a need to have this conversation? It seems extremely premature.
Ms. Cunningham?
To answer your question, let me give a little bit of history. About nine months ago, I had some conversations with folks in the Lake Wales community of the charter board of directors, informing me and the community that BAC was looking at creating another middle school. We currently have a BAC academy on the campus of Warner University, former campus, I should say. And with the way the gradings and everything has gone with that school, the community is looking to add a second middle school, or in this case, when you look at McLaughlin, it would be three. Found out that July 1 of this year, which is only a few months away, there is a private donor who is willing to write a check for $1 million to support the building of BAC North, if you will. So sitting back as a community member and someone who lives, goes to church, goes to the supermarket in Lake Wales, talks to parents, teachers, both at the high school and at the middle schools, it just seemed like that would be a ridiculous venture to have three middle schools in one community. And as it is now, it's only divided the community and not brought it together. So that's why back in February, timing is of the issue here. And as our state statute says, we have the opportunity, because McLaughlin is currently an F school, to close the school and reopen the school as one or more charter schools, each with a governing board that has a demonstrated record of effectiveness. So the thought came to mind, if they're going to be investing $1 million, and to my knowledge, there are private donors outside of this one anonymous donor who have pledged up to and possibly over $5 million total. So I kind of sat back last fall and said, wow, three schools in Lake Wales competing, two BACs, one McLaughlin, what's that going to do to my kids and my community and my parents? So I felt, that's why I brought it forward in February, but yes, timing is an issue, Mr. Harris, because while that school is the grade that it is, it is the opportunity to possibly move it to the Lake Wales charter school system, and then have that 1 to 5 million plus invested into McLaughlin as a BAC North, if you will, rather than using that money to create a third middle school in our community, which rightfully probably only needs one and a half, not three, certainly. So that's the timing thing. So yes, now, we're not looking, you know, and I have representatives here from the community, not looking to open this come August and create absolute havoc in the community. What's been presented is to allow this coming year, if the board so chooses, to be a transition year. Because obviously, we want to think not only about our kids, which to me is the most important piece of this discussion, but teachers, staff, principal, all those questions that have to be answered. But to me, that's something that you sit down at the table and you negotiate with, because everybody's trying to do what's right for kids, and I do believe that in this incident. So to me, yeah, there's all that, and it has to be discussed, and I get that. But what's really important today, and maybe now's not the time to say it, but I've got the platform, so I'm going there, we need to decide as a board if we want to direct staff to move forward in that direction today. Because quite frankly, the charter school board and the donors are hoping to cut a check somewhere in the month of June prior to their fiscal year opening July 1, similar to ours. So timing is very essential. So why wait? We can wait, but if we wait, that window of opportunity may go away. It may get better, but you look at the track record, we've had McLaughlin, at least 12 years that I've been on the board, since the charter system was started in 2004. And we've not been able to turn that school around. And here we have an entity that's a proven entity, wanting to say, here, let us take it, we're going to take all your kids. I passed something out to everybody earlier. This is not a cherry picking, this is not, I'm going to take this kid because he's a Level 3 and the Level 1, I'm going to send to Frostproof. No, that's not what this intent is. The intent is to bring the community together and bring all kids into Lake Wales community. So to answer it in a long way, that's why it's coming before you now, and why now, in my opinion, time is of the essence, essentially. And again, I'm one board member, everybody has a right to their opinion, but that's why it's come before you, because if we don't act, we're going to have three middle schools in our community, which is going to further divide what's already divided. And I have spoken to NAACP president, because a lot of people say, wow, you know, you start cherry picking, my lowest-performing kids are going to get left out, my Hispanic, my Black children, and I'm here to tell you, they're 100% in support of this, because they've seen what it's done to our community over the past 12 years. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
I'm not in support of this. And the reason why I'm not in support of this is because to do something to this level of change, I feel like we need to get buy-in from the school and the parents. We have not done that. I think all of us had an opportunity to go to McLaughlin over the last few weeks, and what I saw is not what I was told that I would see. I saw students engaged, got an opportunity to go to one of the dance classes, and just was amazed at the young lady who's, who's teaching the dance lessons there. I saw a guitar class. So, so there are good things going on there. And if we're going to do this, to me, we have to do it the right way. And the right way, to me, is to allow the stakeholders, and the immediate stakeholders would be the teachers and the parents. And if they say they want to do this, then I am willing to, to work through that. But they have not said that, not to my knowledge. And until they say that, I am not willing to relinquish our responsibility to continue to enhance and to help make McLaughlin the best middle school that we can. And Ms. Jackie, maybe you can help me, or staff can help me. My understanding is that in 2015, 2016, we were making progress. We had a strong principal there, and then she was moved, and we lost a lot of teachers over the last few years, and we got a new principal. And because of that, we might have done better in 2016, had we not had the transition. Is that, is that a correct statement?
True statement. We moved the principal.
Okay. And now, the person that was moved, she's doing extremely well where she is, and I'm sure there's a reason why we did that. But again, we had a lot of questions, and I had a whole bunch of them, and thank staff for the time and effort that was placed in it, because it really helped me to understand it better. But again, I am not willing today to say, staff, go at it and work on the contract.
Ms. Sellers?
I, I had very similar reaction. I went out to the school with an open mind, believe me, after I met with Mr. Gibson. I truly want to do what's best for the kids. And the one thing I will say, no matter what we do, our schools, whether public or charter, can't divide a community. Somehow, we've got to find out how to work together to have a seamless system. But I, I ended up seeing a school, and I got the feeling they did not want to go charter. And I'm much like you, why would, why would we force a charter on a hard-working school? I saw classes, so many engaged kids, ESE kids engaged. I also started gathering data, which I probably should have been looking at every year, but we have so much to look at, I just assumed everything was going on. I saw data that was disturbing. I read the contract we had. BAC is, BAC is doing wonderfully, but BAC turns down Lake Wales kids out of their own charter system for kids outside the school system. I read in the contract where, the contract said they would give preference to Lake Wales children. That hasn't been happening. I feel like they haven't even honored the contract that we have with them right now. There's about 160 kids at BAC that don't live in Lake Wales, and there's 600 that live in Lake Wales. And also, I thought they were on a lottery system. They are not. If you look at the data, they don't take Level 1 and 2 kids. Their own kids from their own charter system elementary school can't get into their middle school charter. They go outside their city rather than take them. That was disturbing to me. I see that there's over 500 kids from their high school that we have to bus, because it's a charter. You know, all of our kids have choice now, but they have to provide their own transportation. We're busing 500 of Lake Wales High School kids into our schools outside of Lake Wales. There's only 1,000 Lake Wales kids going to Lake Wales High School, a third of their kids. The whole idea of the charter was to bring all of Lake Wales kids back. Why are a third of their high school kids still leaving their city, and we're having to bus them to other schools? I don't have answers for that. That's a lot of kids that are not choosing Lake Wales. So when I see that, when, if we were to give them McLaughlin, how many more students are we going to have to bus outside of Lake Wales because they're a charter school? Because if you look at the data from the high school, that was disturbing to me. Over 500, a third of their kids are choosing not to go there? And yes, BAC does very well, but I look at their elementary charters, they've got some of the same issues we have. So given, what I saw at the school, which was excited teachers not wanting to go charter, classes that were enriched, just a different picture than what I was expecting when I went out to the school. And then when I started gathering the data, that just from my questions, it gave me more questions. Now, if, if McLaughlin comes up with another F, they don't think they're going to be an F. I saw positive people. We might have to rethink it. The one thing I would say, though, is I don't want the town divided, and I think we're adults, we're here for the kids, we can figure out a way not to divide the town over charter versus non-charter. Because to tell you the truth, a lot of people aren't even, I, I deal with the public, a lot of them don't even understand the difference between charter and non-charter, so that should not divide the town. But right now, with the data that I saw, and I can't make that decision, because I don't know that it's best for our kids, because I think we're doing a good job at McLaughlin, given that we have all the ones and twos in the town at McLaughlin, the level. We have the lowest-level kids. And so I don't see any proof that the charter can do better by those ones and twos, because we have them. They weren't willing to take them at BAC originally. And, you know, that's what charters were supposed to be for. They were supposed to come in with, public schools failed these low-level kids, and enhance them. And what I see charters doing is only taking the brightest kids, and of course, they're successful. So I have more questions today than I had before, and I cannot make this decision at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, then Ms. Rosens, then Mr. Townsend?
I guess I have, I have a little different perspective on it. In my opinion, if we, to the extent that we can motivate our communities to engage in our school district, I think that's what we should be doing. I think that's how we solve the problems of education. And there's been no better community than Lake Wales in engaging in their, in their school district. So, you know, from my perspective, I would hope that this is not about blaming the teachers at McLaughlin or the leadership at McLaughlin in any way, shape, or form, because certainly they've had to deal with, with the, their students with the greatest challenges. I would see it in a different, in a different light, simply in, you know, providing an opportunity for the community to become more fully involved. Now, having said that, you know, there are some, some concerns I have. Number one would be, you know, putting a cap on the number of students they bring in from, from outside Lake Wales. I mean, they, they've already started that, I'm not sure if you could, I'm sure if we said now we're going to have this hard cap and no kids come in from other communities, we'd hear from those communities, because some of those folks from other places at, for example, BAC. But I would like to see a cap. I would think that it would mean some sort of very strong language about none of the school, none of those children leaving Lake Wales. And by the way, I know Mr. Townsend has been involved in this, and since his involvement, I've seen some, I've seen the leadership at Lake Wales come to the table and say, hey, look, we're willing to work with you and put that in writing in some way, shape, or form. I think that would be something that I would want to see. And here's my take on it. If you look at the empirical evidence throughout the country as relates to education, first and foremost for parents, more so than equality education for the child, is the safety of the child. It's a, it's a discipline issue, it's a disruption in the classroom issue. Or first and foremost for teachers, it's the same thing, it's disruption in the classroom. And in my opinion, I think one of the pieces of the puzzle that we miss in education has to be other opportunity schools. And let me be clear about this, I'm not, this is not an indictment of our opportunity schools. I think that generally, they don't have the resources they need to do what they should be doing. But I think that what happens is when we, when we have those children who are, who create challenges, we're not getting them the services they need. So what happens is we send them to an opportunity school, and then the community looks at us and says, wait, one minute, you're sending these kids over here, they're not getting the services they need, they come back, and they're actually worse than we, than we sent them, because in the meantime, they haven't been getting an education. So it seems to me, the key is to, is to provide services at those opportunity schools that those students need when they go there. And I say this because the Lake Wales Charter School District has talked about doing that. So that would be a piece of the puzzle from my perspective. I would say if they're, if they're willing to sit down and say, look, we're not going to turn away any of our students, we're going to develop an opportunity school that provides resources for those kids who need help, and I think they will. I mean, I think that community is very serious about providing the best possible opportunities in education for their children. I think what that would do is it would establish a model, not only for this community, not only for our county, but nationwide, in, in, in providing the best possible model for, for students. for, for students to, to get the best possible education. Again, here's an opportunity to test that, and I think we've, we've got that in front of us. I think it means some, you know, some harsh feelings within the community. I think it's a good opportunity for us. But here's what I would suggest. Here's what I would like to see happen. I would like to see a meeting, the superintendent, whomever she wishes out of the table, the leadership from Lake Wales, Mr. Gibson, whoever he wants to see at the table. I think it should include Mrs. Kilaboo, the principal at, at McLaughlin, and whomever she wants to bring to the table. I think it should include a school board member, and given that that's my district, I would prefer to be there, but I know.
It's okay. Yeah, you should be.
Mrs. Cunningham.
I agree.
Has grown up in that community, Mr. Townsend's been involved in that. But I think we should sit down and have a discussion and see if we can, if we can find a way through this. I think we, we can do that if we, if we wanted to do that.
Ms. Brady, attachments five through eight that you sent about the current application process, it talks about going through for this year's. Is that the same verbal letter that's been used in the past where they've had access to the FSA scores and all of that? Or is that new this year?
That is a new verbal form this year.
Okay. But in the past, have they been receiving that information, do you know?
In the past, they have received information, but we're really unsure where the information came from, honestly.
Okay.
Last year was the first year that we were, my office was actually called toward the information when I inquired about that, the process behind that. That's what started the verbal form. So last year, they, they submitted a purple form so that we could release the information. This year, they submitted a purple form and they released, and released the information as well.
Is, I mean, they're still requesting attendance records, behavior, extracurricular activities, which baffles me. Why would they need this information? If it is a true lottery system, do we have any reason to believe that they?
I think if you refer to the letter that I sent to, I sent to Amy Tully.
Yes.
And I, and actually, the letter that I sent to Mr. Moses, who is the principal, it outlines what they're allowed to do with that information based on the law. We can provide that, we can provide all of the student performance data, we can provide FSA test scores, but they are not to use it anyway to select their, their students for enrollment. And we outlined that in a memo that was sent, what was it? That was sent the 27th of February. And then, following that was an email communication between myself and Ms. Tully, who works at Mr. Gibson's office. And again, we just reiterated the fact that the information that, that we, that they requested is fine, but that they cannot use that as part of their enrollment.
And that all of that information becomes available to them once a student becomes enrolled in BAC automatically, correct? So there really should not be any reason for them to need it before. I just, when I look at the scores that they gave us, where there's clearly one-twos and threes are all being sent.
I, I will say that there, there are other communications that aren't included in these attachments between the Office of Charter Schools and with Amy Tully, who is representative from Mr. Gibson's office. And she made it very clear that she understood that, and she also communicated that with Mr. Moses, that you cannot. So that, that has been made very clear, that you cannot accept a child based on their academic record for this year. So it, the communication there, it's in writing, it's been acknowledged. So we are very hopeful that, you know, with the new incoming students, that there wouldn't be, if I was to pull the record in September, October, there wouldn't be a significant number of threes and fours admitted to the school as opposed to the ones and twos, because then it would just make it a little more, make it obvious. And I actually outlined all of that scenario in an email. So the communication's been set. So it has definitely been brought to the table, it's definitely been acknowledged on both parties. I also say that, Ms. Tully also said that Mr. Moses is entering into their, their administration, has kind of came to, come to the table again, and they are going to, again, revise the language in the contract. Or not the contract, the parent contract, and also the target, or the enrollment portion of the contract. So I'm waiting to see what that will look like. I don't know when that will come, but I'm anticipating that that would come before the school year. So, and I, because I really, truly think that they, they do understand this, and I, I can't imagine that this was ignored. So, but it's all been in writing, the district has put, we've made our stance, and so the communication's been there.
Up to this point, though, has that ever been a conver, I mean, the past several years, they've very clearly been using, there's some way that they get students that are one-twos and threes not at BAC, and they all end up at McLaughlin. Has there been any communication before this year saying, "Hey, you can't do this"?
No, it just can't, it was ju, the law just changed.
Okay.
So when the law changed, that was our opportunity to make sure that that conversation was had.
I just, it, it is hard for me to vote in good faith for when they're, if they truly want what's best for all children, then I feel they would have been doing that since day one, not starting 12 years down the road. That I can't support making McLaughlin a charter school when they haven't shown that they're wanting those students since the beginning. They're, now the law's changed, and we have to make it a lie-type thing.
I think it's Mr. Wilson's.
We have Mr. Townsend, then we'll go back to Mr. Wilson.
Several things in, in non-sequential order. First, I, I think one of the striking things to me about all of this is how few parents, how few parents on either side have seemed to talk about this. I, when I wrote my first piece about it, I heard from probably six or seven McLaughlin parents who wanted to keep the school as a, a, a reg, a regular school. I have yet to hear from any parent from Lake Wales who is, or a McLaughlin parent who wants that school to be made into a charter. That is, you know, I'm not in touch with all parents by, by, by any, but, but that was in, in, interesting to me. That's, that's not the deciding, necessarily the deciding factor for me. I think beyond the issues of Lake Wales, which I want to help solve very much, there is the wider district to think about and the way this all relates to everything else. That, that is one of the things I did not grasp when I was, when, when I set out to run, is, is this isn't just a Lake Wales is, issue. The McLaughlin zone pings off a whole bunch of zones, and I've written about this. And there's just a lot of interconnected parts. And so, I have to think about those parts. And I can't, Lori, to, to your point, I can't worry about what Lake Wales is going to do with BAC too. That if, if they decide to do that on that timetable, then I'll wish them well, I'll still, I still want to work with them. We, we still need to, to work on it. But that can't be sort of the gun to our head in the, in, in the sense of, of making this choice. Nor, and for me, McLaugh, this is not an issue of performance. I, I think we've talked a lot, a lot about whose performance is better than whose. I'm not interested in that. This is a community issue. You know, I found in, in my own research that 51% of the kids who came in to McLaughlin this year from the charter district led, read at, at Level One. That's troubling to me. That's like an F school spread across four schools, you know, that, that, that came up into, into McLaughlin. But that's not, to me, what, what this is about. I, I think we both have a lot of work to do out there. And what I, I like what Lynn is saying, but I think the problem is we're trying to jump on, to pull the trigger before we decide what we're shooting at. And I'd rather come up with what we're shooting at and pull the trigger on the back end. You know, like, like I, I think there's a, the, I would love to set up a standing cooperation committee, not, not just a meeting, and, and, and ongoing regularly scheduled meeting. You, you're, I mean, I would volunteer for it myself, but, but Lynn, I mean, you've, you've already said you want to, you want, you want to do it. But, you know, we, we should have somebody like John on it if we're going to move forward, who's a good negotiator. And spend a little time, it took 15 years to get to, to this point. Let's spend a little time to try to come up with the kind of model you're ta, ta, talking about. Let's explore this. I mean, I was very excited to see, and, and I give a lot of credit to, to, to the Lake, Lake Wales Char folks. They sent at 3:30 yesterday afternoon a very interesting proposal about zoning and about us being able to essentially turn kids away from, it, it's, all that's very, very in, in, interesting to me. I, I want to know what, I know Wes does not think that's legal. And I'm, I don't know the answer to that. I, but I know I can't pull the trigger having that kind of ambiguity. So I'd like to work through these issues to get together. I also appreciate the job, the job protection stuff. I mean, that's the kind of move that's going to make partnership easier in the long, 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 long term. But I think we can't just do it the ea, easy way. We have to sit down and do the hard work over time. So that's what I would like to propose, is that it doesn't die here today, that we, that we set up a committee and work through it, and, and see if we can come up with some modus operandi. It's not just BAC and McLaughlin, it's the high school, it's, it's, it's the way the elementaries work, it's everything. And, and that's where I am on it. So I don't know what that means exactly. I guess I'll stop there.
Back to Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Brady, you, you were going to say something, and I.
Yes, that's fine.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
So, I, I agree. We need to do the work. My concern is that, first of all, I don't think what they're asking us to do is turn McLaughlin into a charter school. They're asking for a contract to run it, I believe, which could be a very, a very fine distinction in that it would give us an opportunity to.
I, I, I think they're deeding the school.
Yeah, close, that's exactly, and open it as a charter, yeah. Because of financial implications.
Mr. Wilson, I think the original idea that was pitched was to contract with them.
Right, okay.
But I, I get the sense that what is currently before you is more the suggestion of closing the school and reopening it. Those are both options under the turnaround statute.
So, you know, I, I hear you, that we don't, you know, want to move forward as if we have a gun to our head with them opening another charter school. But the reality is, and I think we have to look at the realities of why, if they do that, we'll be back here, we will be back here talking about an F school and how to fix that. Not because of the teachers there, let me be clear about this, not because of the leadership there. Because we know there are certain schools in the, in their charter school system that, who are working with similar populations that are having the same types of struggles. So we'll be back here with an F school to be talking about. So instead of being proactive, we'll be reacting. And I, I would hope we could find a way to be proactive, and, and maybe it's, it's your suggestion, I don't know. But I would rather be proactive than reactive.
Well, I, I just think, you turned, you deed the school over, all leverage is gone. And, you know, you, you, you don't have anything to negotiate with.
Well, I think we work on a contract. We work on, we work on a contract, it has its own right hand to it.
Right, and, and again, I, I need to see this idea of zoning explored in depth. I need to, I mean, those are, we need to have a public meeting so that people can yell at us. I mean, if, I mean, this is, there are a lot of things that have to happen. When I said the thing about, I mean, I, again, I, I wish, I wished them well. I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying, I have to think about the entire district. I have to think about Westwood Middle, I have to think about Boone Middle. I have to think about all the stuff going on in, in Winter Haven. And as, as long as those schools are struggle, struggling as well, I need, I, I need McLaughlin and, and, and Lake Wales and to not channel children where, where, you know, where, where they're going to be set aggregated by low performance. You know, I, I think the, and I think also, what's coming out of the legislature right now is a giant wrench in all of it, because we don't know what they're going to do. And I'm committed to do the work over the long term. I, I just can't vote to turn the school o, over in the next month. I need time to study that. If, I think it would be irresponsible. I think one of, one of the things you see in education all the time is unintended consequences from hasty a, action. And, you know, every time the legislature acts, they do it. I don't want to do something dumb that creates new problems. So I'd rather figure out what the problems are going to be and act on the backside of it cooperatively. And if that means we do some kind of special legislat, right, ration down, down the road, I'm all for it. You know, mostly, I just want to work with that community to figure out a, answers that work for them and for the district as a whole, and I certainly volunteer myself to do it. So I guess that's where I am.
So it would appear, just by everybody speaking, that we probably don't have consensus today to move forward.
Do we have consensus to keep talking? Who, who?
I would hope we can continue.
Can we, can we, can we talk about having consensus to set up a standing committee, exactly what Lynn, like, that meeting struc, structure Lynn was ta, talking about? And we can alternate who does it? You know, I, I mean, again, you want to do it, fine. I mean, I, I, I don't want to hoar, to horn in on that, but I would certainly volunteer to do it if you didn't.
After the school grades come out.
But this is irrelevant to the school, school rates. I mean, I don't care about the school, 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 school rates, I think they're all fraud. I care about trying to unify that community, trying to do right by all the kids there. And there are many ways that we could operate better to, with each other if we're talking. I mean, look at all the stuff that came out just now, just by having this discussion. This discussion's been incredibly va, valuable. They've just made a significant move in recognizing some underlying principles. Well, let's explore those principles. But, but, you know, it's like anything else, it's like, it's like, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to do a peace negotiation. You know, you, you, that, that's going to get snapped, snap your fingers and get it done. Let's, let's, let's work forward with some kind of stand, standing community. I'm sorry.
We're going to start this direction.
I, I am totally in agreement with having, the one reason I was really considering this idea was I don't want to see a community torn apart. I personally am frustrated because we're all for kids. So why are we, because it's a charter and because it's a public, a regular public school, why, why are the adults having a hard time getting along? Why is there a split? I would love to see a committee working together so that, for the benefit of all those children. Many of those children flow from McLaughlin to Lake Wales. Why aren't, why don't we have a seamless operation there? Those are the kinds of things that I would certainly welcome. As far as the community, I too, just what Ms. Fields said, the community, a big part of the community is that community involved. And when I went there, I was surprised that the community of McLaughlin wants to stay a regular public school. That's the community that should be most considered. And so that, I am like Ms. Fields. If that community came forward, the parents, the teachers, the staff, if they came forward, there would be no fight. But to, against their will, make them a charter, that is something that I would be unwilling to do. And I still have questions. I want to know why, and in this committee, why are 500 of the high school kids still leaving Lake Wales? Why are we busing them to other areas? I want to know if the ESE kids are being served in Lake Wales. Are those parents being burdened with having their children bused outside of the community? There's still so many questions that I have that this could, committee could work on and address. And in the end, the kids would be better served. And I think we would be better off, Lake Wales charters would be better off because ultimately, that's the purpose, is to better serve our kids. So I'm for a, a standing committee to better, to work together for the benefit of the kids.
And I guess that would be my question, and hopefully you answer it. And what would be the end goal of the meetings? Is it to work together and to come to some type of consensus? That at the end of the day, it's not about any of us, it's about what's best for our kids. And the other thing that I want to say is, Ms. Kilaboo and her team seem to think that they are going to have a, a, a better year as it relates to grades. So I don't think we should be saying that we're going to be coming back to the table because they're going to get an F. And hopefully, I, I didn't hear that. I think that we need to be positive. They're working their butts off. And I believe that we're going to see some academic gains. I believe that, and I think all of us should believe that. And if we come back to the table, hopefully, we'll come back celebrating that they were able to do something that many folks thought that they could not do. Because again, what I saw there, those kids were engaged. 'Cause again, what I saw there, those kids were engaged, very manable, dressed very nicely. They had their shirts in their pants tucked in, I mean, just things that sometimes we typically don't even see at some of our other schools I saw there. So I am positive. But I, I just wanted to make sure that we need to be upbeat and believe that McLaughlin can turn that situation around because I believe that they can.
I think echoing what both of them have said, it's, McLaughlin is doing a ton of work and they have a community that wants to be just as engaged as the rest of the Lake Wales community. I went to their rock and roll concert in February and there were 150 students and parents and siblings at 10:00 AM on a Saturday morning just hanging out in an ice cream place, listening to these kids play rock and roll. But it's incredible how many people there are also involved and engaged. And I think we need to remember them as part of the community, not just, oh, that's a district school, so as Lake Wales, we don't necessarily care about them as a part of the city. They are a part of Lake Wales. And I think anytime the district and Lake Wales charter schools can come together and talk about Lake Wales as a community, not just as Lake Wales charter schools versus the district, is great. And we should have a standing committee just to kind of, this is what's happening in our schools. And, you know, we have students that are elementary school at the district and middle school charter and then back to one of our district high schools. That it should be a seamless transition for all students, not just the ones who are part of our system.
So I agree 100% that we need to sit down and have these conversations. Let me just say that approximately eight, nine years ago, I got with the chamber director at the time and we created a back-to-school educational breakfast for all the schools in Lake Wales. Everybody's invited. So the community has embraced, it's not a us versus, it's none of that. Everybody tries to work together. The standpoint that I was coming from is that because of BAC Academy, being a BAC Academy, being a charter school, application parental process that they have to sign, you with me? That McLaughlin has through the years ended up with our lowest level children, that's all. Not that people don't talk to one another or whatever, I don't wanna give the wrong impression. The community has always tried to work together. And I think bringing all the schools together and having that breakfast thing to kind of start the school year off and kind of give everybody a good cheer and blessings as they move forward, both the teachers and the students, has just been wonderful to bring the community, all the schools together. So I, I say that to say, everybody does try to work together, but through the years, you know, you say you haven't heard from parents. I, on the opposite end of the spectrum over the past maybe week, and especially after Madison's story ran on Saturday, it's been nonstop on my phone. Okay, so it depends who you're talking to. There's a lot of people who are cautious, optimistically cautious to do this, kinda like we're hearing here today, which is fine because of some of the things that have been done, that have been pointed out. You say you're gonna do X, but then you go and do Y. So now do I trust you when you say you're gonna take all kids? I'm putting the elephant right where it belongs. Yeah, those are things we have to work out, definitely. But knowing the players and knowing the people, you know, it's one thing when BAC is yours and McLaughlin isn't. And it's another thing when you're responsible for all kids in that zone. And with the financial lift that will be coming potentially, we all know, I, I can tell you from my schools, you know, there are some places where I have 12 pairs assisting teachers because those kids need extra lifts. And that's just a fact. And that's what we have to look at. And maybe there's extra lift that needs to be done. So I just didn't want people to think that nobody talks to one another and there's no togetherness, 'cause there is. But the bottom line is, we have our lowest, a lot, a lot, a majority of our lowest level students currently attending McLaughlin. And Eileen Killibrew's wonderful, I mean, follow her career, she's done great things, she's only had a year, this is only her second year at the school. And it takes time to establish all of that. I'm sure as the years go on, hopefully the, the students will do better. But what I hear from the high school is the remedial stuff that they have to do with the McLaughlin kids. Is that our, yes, am I faulting anybody? There's no fault, but it's about giving the kids the best opportunity. And that's kinda how I looked at it and why I said we need to have this discussion. And we are, and it's a blessing, no matter which way it flows today. So, Mr. Wilson, to your point, I support you in creating a committee in the community that meets on a regular basis to discuss this. I do feel, I do feel that if, you know, as we're not, looks like we're not moving forward as far as a contractual situation by our next meeting in May, that BAC North will be built within two years. And then a lot of those kids that are moving up in McLaughlin will probably be siphoned off to BAC North. So I hope in our discussion, you know, and I feel you are, obviously that is your school and so forth. So I would hope that you would be a part of that. I'm here to assist in any way possible 'cause my heart is in that community, 'cause I live there. That we would be able to do that and then keep in mind as we move forward with three middle schools in the community, how to address some of these very poignant issues. Because I want all kids, all kids to have the opportunity and the same rigorous foundation before they move into their high school. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Harrington, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, this is your school district that this school resides in and Lake Wales is a part of your dis- your district. And I, for one, don't want to trip up on protocol because we as a board, when we set up any kind of committee, we as a group decide who is going to represent us. So I, for one, would not want to step on anyone's toes, yours especially, because this is your district. And your district is the person, in my opinion, who should represent, or you should, any committee that's created for the purpose of conversation. Not any of us just volunteering, but you are that point person because it's in your district. Secondly, I'd like to share with you a little story that occurred to me about a year ago, prior to this issue becoming public, but it involves the McLaughlin community and the BAC community. I had a Lake Wales attorney call me and he was upset that the FERPA information was not being shared from McLaughlin, excuse me, from, uh, excuse me, the elementary schools to BAC for his kid to be admitted. And the board members got a lot of emails in regards to that the day before Easter break. And in the course of that conversation, I asked what I thought was the dumb attorney question, I call them, the one you already know the answer to. But I was stunned by the response I got from this man. Have you ever made an appointment with the principals of BAC and McLaughlin and taken a tour of those two schools to decide which one best fits your son's needs? The response was no. He was relying on what I call the Walmart conversation in the community to make his decision as to where to send his child for the middle school years. I would encourage anyone in the quote "BAC" community and anyone in the McLaughlin community to do exactly that. Make an appointment and go visit those two schools to decide for yourself where is the best educational opportunity for your child. I think a lot of the conversation is probably revolving around people who have never walked into the doors of either one of those schools. That is unconscionable that you wanna make such a dramatic change and you have never talked to the principal or taken a tour of that school. Whether it's McLaughlin and Lake Wales and BAC or any other part of the community or the county, you ought to do that for your own child's benefit, not for the political advancement of your cause. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
I think what I'm hearing is that we, we agreed to a committee. So I would hope that we could reach out to the leadership of Lake, Lake Wales community and, and see if they would be willing to engage us in that. I, I certainly believe that Mrs. Killibrew should be a part of that. And I just wanna clarify something. I, throughout this conversation, I've been very careful to make it clear that I don't believe it's the, the teachers or the leadership of McLaughlin that is, is the challenge there. And I don't believe, I think that Mrs. Killibrew is certainly capable of, of bringing that school back. I don't really think that's the issue. I think the, there's a bigger issue. And, and, and when I said that, that we'll be dealing with an F school, what I meant by that was, once they start another BAC, if they begin siphoning off even more of, of those students and we end up with the most challenging students at, at McLaughlin, it really doesn't matter who's the leader there, it's gonna be, you know, a, an untenable situation. So it certainly is not reflected on the, on the teachers there or the leadership there. But, you know, I think they should be at the table. I agree that they should be at the table as part of this discussion. So I would hope that we can move forward with that.
Mr. Townsend.
I mean, I, I, I think to somebody's point, I think it was, hey, you were asking about what, what this committee should actually try to do. I, I, I think we certainly owe, owe that to the, the, the charter folks to have a rough agenda for it. And here's my suggestion, you can, can, can take it or believe it. There are a number of specific things that go on out there, like, like the, how pe- people roll up or don't roll up into the hi- hi- high school. I would very much like Lake Wales High School to be the default high school for Lake, for Lake Wales. I think it's a good hi- hi- high school. I think Dada Dot also does a really, really good job. They had the teacher of the year for the charter group last night for the, uh, who, for her work with, with kids who aren't online to, uh, gra- Actually, I, I think that's a really, a, a really good school. I don't know how we've gotten to the point where it's not the default high school exactly. I want it to be the default high school for Lake, for, for Lake Wales because community, I have this sort of community idea for, for schools as a whole. I think the closer, that's the answer to this ult- ultimately. I think where specific issues come up, like if a child has to leave BAC and go back to McLaughlin or vice versa, are, are the middle schools talking to one another and saying, hey, we're about to send to this kid? This is what we think the issue is, this is how this child would benefit? Or vice versa, you know, like, eh, eh, work out some mechanism for talking to each other. I think, I could be wrong, 'cause I'm not in every one of their schools, but I don't, I, I think Lake Wales Charter has a hole in arts education that, that McLaughlin sort of, sort of fills. Maybe there's a way to get some of those kids access to some of the, like, there are a million different things we, we could do that are short of, you know, fully turning some, something over. But I would like to work to eventual- eventually, and, and maybe the, the committee will decide they don't wanna do it, but to something that looks like a zoned community dis- dis- district that is a partnership between, between, between us that would probably ultimately have decision-making authority at the charter level because they have the high school. That's, if we had the high school, I, I would think very differently. We don't. They have the tip of the pear- ar- ar- arid. I'm not in- interested in building a second high, high, high school there, you know, I mean, it's, it's. So I would love to work towards some sort of arrangement where we're cooperative. Lake, Lake Wales High is the default hi- 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 high school. And a lot of little things underneath that are sources of irritation are dealt with on a case-by-case basis. And I think the only way to do that is if we're talking to each other on a regular, you know, in, in, in regular se- sequence. So that's my suggested agenda for the, for the, for the community.
Mr. Wilson.
And I agree completely. I think that ultimately the goal, in my opinion, should be a, a district that is a, a shared governance with us. And I couldn't agree more with you as relates to Lake Wales High School. The grade there is a figment of someone's imagination. I didn't know to say that out loud, did I?
You could say it's, it's fraud. There's, all, all the grades are fraud.
It's terribly unfortunate because the, the students can go there, they can get, you know, if they, if they want to, if they aspire to go on to a top-rate college, they can do that. But they, they also have opportunities for, for the kids who, who simply want a career. And, you know, I think that that's one of the great mistakes we make in education today. We, there's so much focus on pushing everyone to college instead of providing opportunities for those kids who simply want a career. And I know it's high on the agenda here to make sure we're addressing those needs, but it's a top-rate school and we should be focused on, on the kids in that community, uh, uh, going to that school. So, yeah, that would be my approach as well. But I think, I think that where we go from there depends on the conversation.
Right, exactly. I mean, you can talk about a general goal, it's got a million specifics under, under, underneath it. And that's why we can't just say, okay, done, today. I mean, that, we have to line this out because we don't wanna create more problems. Sorry.
What I, what I'll add is we've developed the committee, we're talking to a lot of people that's not inside the building. I think the teachers should, before we start a committee talking, the teachers should hear where we are and what we're gonna be discussing. Because we are talking about the people inside that building and this is their livelihood as well.
And parents too. Parents need to be included too.
Madam Superintendent, I'll, I'll defer to you to figure out how you want to, you know, approach that.
I just wanna make sure we do not leave them out of the conversation as a whole.
Oh, Adam.
Yes, go ahead.
Are, are, are you giving them veto power over the committee?
No. No. Any other question? Okay.
So who are we behind schedule? The next item is Dr. Frehholdt.
I'm sorry if I disrupted the, the flow of the meeting. I, I was under the impression that I was on the agenda at 1:15 and I thought, I'm looking early and so I got to the call that-
We were just trying to let you come first, Dr. Frehholdt, you're fine.
Okay, okay.
We were just trying to save you some time, but you're good.
We have a pretty delusional agenda today.
You have, you have coming around a copy of the final report of the superintendent's evaluation. I did not send that to you ahead of time, although I know that's the, the normal protocol for getting the, the, ahead of time. And the reason being, just because of the nature of the, of the subject matter, I thought the board should see it first. The board and superintendent should see it first. And of course, I brought enough copies for your normal distribution and then I also have it on a flash drive so it can be distributed beyond that as well.
Just keep it back to you.
I'm feeling pretty dumb right, right now. Anybody want one, want one?
I know you're a little bit behind schedule and what I'm gonna do is to move through this rather quickly because in the report, you have a lot of detail. You, you probably spend two or three hours looking at all the detail in the report. Today, what I wanted to do in the presentation is to give you sort of the bottom line on everything. And you remember, oh, wow, you probably can't see that very well, can you? But there were seven different areas and this is the first area that was covered. And it had to do with board relationships. And you may not be able to see the blue and the orange too well. What I did was I color-coded so that any rating that was above 3.5, the significance of that being it's closer to, exceeds than it is to meets expectation, is color-coded in blue. Anything that was below three is color-coded in orange. In the case you can't see the color coding well, there, there's one orange up there, there's a whole bunch of blues up there. In terms of general leadership, something very similar, the majority of those, again, are blue. There are no orange at all. And I wanna reiterate what we're talking about. These are ratings that are closer to exceed than to meets. You know, meet is good. Exceed is where you're above what the expectations were and most of these are closer to exceeds. When we get to staff leadership, a little bit different. There is one that is color-coded in below 3.0, one that's color-coded in higher than 3.5. But I wanna also add that in talking with each one of the board members, also in looking at the comments that board members wrote, the scenario goes something like this. When Mrs. Burr came- When Mrs. Byrd came in, there was a serious morale issue, and she has done a marvelous job of moving forward with that issue. There is still a morale issue, but it's a lot better than it was. The ratings there are more reflection, I think, from everything I heard, of the morale condition in the district as opposed to her leadership in that area, because people were saying she's done a marvelous job of moving us from a terrible situation to not a real good situation, but not anywhere like it was before. The curriculum leadership, again, there's one that's color-coded in blue. All of the others are above meet expectation. Physical responsibilities, this was the lowest area, and you can see that there is one that is below 3.0, that's a little bit below meet's expectations, and the rest of them are somewhere in between 3.0 and 3.5. Professional growth, there were more, well, there were a whole bunch of NAs for this one where people were saying, I don't know if she's doing these things or not. It's not an area that I think the board had a lot of interest in, certainly something that they have not monitored. But again, all of the ratings were above 3.0. If we look at the average for the seven performance areas, you can see that they're all above three, and board relationships and general leadership are above 3.5. In terms of summary, what I took from this is that the board rating of superintendents were generally quite positive. The highest ratings were for general leadership and relationship with stakeholders. And I mentioned general leadership, the relationship with stakeholders, probably got more regulatory comments than any other area in terms of the work that has been done in going out and turning things around, establishing relationships that had not been established before. And I think that probably every one of the board members, when I talked with you individually, made a statement something to the effect that, in talking with your principals, that is the principals in the schools in your district, that all of them were very, very happy with the superintendent, and felt like great progress had been made in terms of improving the relationship between the superintendent's office and the student. The lowest ratings, even though they were still considerably above meet expectations, were for physical responsibilities and staff leadership. In their comments, in your comments, I think that you made it clear that the superintendent had inherited a situation where there were a lot of negatives, and the superintendent had done a good job of improving those areas. And lastly, the superintendent received a great deal of praise in several areas, such as connecting with the school principals and the community, making some very positive professional moves, that is, in terms of, well, personnel moves, in terms of key positions in the denfield with very capable people, and demonstrating a deep concern for students. And I'm still amazed that some of the board members were telling me that superintendent goes to the schools and is able to call kids, call kids by name, as she had done when she was there before. They were very impressed by that. A few procedural recommendations that I had. One is that the board chronologically align superintendent evaluation, budgeting, and the strategic planning process, which is a recommendation that I shared with you from 10 years ago. And we have a proposal now for how to do that. The board should conduct periodic superintendent compensation studies in comparable districts to make sure that your compensation is aligned with those. And lastly, that item 13 should be removed from the evaluation form because it seems like the board doesn't believe that. It's part of the responsibility of the superintendent to make you aware of board development opportunities. Any questions so far about what we have here? And again, you can go through this in detail. There's an awful lot of detail there. I think the bottom line is, the evaluation was very positive. Yes, sir?
I just, item 13, just to confirm, that was about board, our professional development as a whole.
Yes, yes. Any other questions, comments, before we go to the next slide? Yes, ma'am.
Page 13 on the table. Need to change the very first column to LW.
Okay. All right.
Not ML. Is that? Margaret Bobb. Is that my successor? No. No, we're keeping you. We love you.
She gets sleep in at evaluations.
Yeah.
And since you've caught my typo, I will confess to another one. And you see the cover for the document where it has my telephone number? It's really 289-0665 instead of the number that's there. Okay, moving on then. We talked about the chronological alignment of these various activities, superintendent evaluation, strategic planning, budgeting, et cetera. Right now, they're out of line. And the way that I think this should go, which I talked with each one of you about individually when we met, and I think everybody was in agreement as well. First of all, you assess where you are, which you did with your analysis of the current situation that we went over in the strategic planning session this year. You have the grades, and you set your goals, et cetera. The DOE sometime near the end of July is going to come up with the grades. And your strategic goals for the year, the five goals, are all related in some way, well, most of them are related in some way to the grades that are going to come from the DOE. That's part of the superintendent evaluation, the degree to which she's able to move the district toward these goals that you set with the grades. So you can't evaluate her fully until that's happened. So what's going to happen then is that when the superintendent gets the report from the DOE, she's going to prepare a report for you which says, okay, here's how we did on goal one, here's how we did on goal two, here's how we did on goal three, et cetera. And for any that were not met, she's going to say, here's what we did, this was our strategy. For whatever reason, the strategy didn't work. But you know what? Next year, if you still want to accomplish that, we've got some other ideas. Let me tell you about those ideas, which is an important kind of thing because you learn as much from your failures as you do from your successes, and this is part of what strategic planning is all about. Accomplishing goals, and when you don't accomplish them, figuring out why, and then moving forward from there. You're going to re-update your SWOT analysis you did from last year, and then you're going to have your retreat. Superintendent is going to present her report, you're going to look at the updated SWOT analysis, you're going to set new goals for the next year, and then the superintendent evaluation forms will get redistributed so that you can do part two and part three, which you could not do now because you didn't have the results from the DOE. Then.
Before you go, just one question at the very bottom of the previous slide. And maybe, maybe I don't have the right vision for that superintendent evaluation forms are distributed. My vision for the second portion of the evaluation is that we do not, as individuals, evaluate her on those items. Those are objective, based purely on the raw numbers that come back from all of those components that make up that portion. So those numbers would just be pre-populated, would they not?
Let me tell you how I'm envisioning it.
That's not for us to evaluate whether she did or did not meet those goals, because those are raw numbers.
I agree with you, but could I add in just a little bit? You go ahead, then I'll start.
Certainly, you could evaluate it based on the goals that were in place before I got on the board, but.
That's all we have to deal with.
Right, no, no, going ahead, moving ahead, I'm going to be, there's going to be a subjective quality to.
No, this is what we did today, is subjective portion. This is the objective portion.
What I'm telling you is that the strategic plan may well change if I have my.
No, we're not talking about the future. We're talking about what currently decides right now. This is not a discussion for future. This is how are we going to populate this portion of the evaluation? My understanding is, it's just purely the raw numbers, and that's an objective. It's not our feelings about the results.
Let me throw out a little scenario in how I'm envisioning this. Okay, you get the raw numbers that you're talking about. And let's say on goal X, the district exceeded that by a sizable amount, and you could not be happier with the fact that you did that. Goal Y, it just barely creaked in, and you just barely met it. Goal Z, you were a little bit below. Goal Q, you weren't even in the ballpark. Nothing happened there. So the superintendent comes back and says, okay, look over here, goal X, and everybody's saying, fantastic, wonderful, hallelujah. The second one, well, you met it, you just met, but you didn't meet it. You know, the other goal, you didn't quite get there, but you have some very good explanation for why that happened, perhaps some things that were totally beyond the superintendent's control, and move on. And then the one that nothing was done on, and by the way, there might be one like this this year, because it was something that, as we started working on it, became so porous that it would just slip through your fingers, and it was hard to actually get a grip on what success in that area looked like. So I'm saying, you might look at all of this, take it all into consideration, and say, you know, altogether, altogether, I think she did a really outstanding job. I'm going to give her a four. Or you might look at it and say, you know, altogether, I'm pleased, I'm pleased, I'm not thrilled, but I'm pleased. I'm going to give her a three. Or you might look at it and say, you know, she exceeded goal one, but I really thought the important one was goal Z, and we really blew it on goal Z. No, 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 no. We, a two, a two is what is merit. You see what I'm getting at, it's sort of like taking the whole thing.
I understand, I just don't believe that that's the way Tim Harris personally wants to go. I would, if I sat in that seat, prefer that the board set the parameters, here's, let's say, one through four. If I exceeded by this percentage, it's a four. If I exceeded by this percentage, and so on, so that you know going in what it takes, as the kids always used to say, what do I have to do to get an A? What I'm hearing you say is there's still subjective evaluation off the objective results that we're going to get. And I don't think that that's what the intent was.
Maybe, for the example, if our graduation rate goes up simply because we better classify it, you know, like our clerical behavior gets better, that doesn't reflect anything about what's happening in the schools. And I think that's where subjectivity can come into objectivity. I mean, I would like the ability to be able to have some sort of reference to the numbers. I mean, I'm not saying I would disavow, but it would be nice to be able to look at the numbers with some context. I think numbers without context are not objective, generally. That's, but I'm not going to, that's for another time. I'll be quiet.
And I can see exactly where you're coming from with your argument, and there are some systems where things aren't totally objective. There are so many things in life, though, where we rate people, and they're not objective. You know, most valuable player in the basketball game. You have five people, they might pick five different people because it's how they're viewing the situation. But you get the group together, and the group agrees, okay, it's player X that did better than, maybe player Y scored more points, maybe they had more assists, maybe they had more steals, maybe they had more rebounds. But altogether, you put it all together, and they think this player was the best one. And it's sort of the same situation where you take all the data, look at it as a whole and say, this is how I feel about the performance altogether. And none of this says we have to do it that way. That's just the way it has to be set up now, and it could be changed in the future if you wanted to.
Do we have to make some sort of choice? Is there a thing we have to say, do, or do we just do this?
Not today.
Not today.
Okay.
Have we submitted evaluation?
Right.
You haven't done part two and part three, you just did part one. Part two and part three would come after you have the data to evaluate the goals.
Right, so I mean, this is what you're proposing will happen, correct?
This is what I'm proposing, right. And going to the second chart here, then you do the subsequent part, however we do it, you do the second part of the evaluation. Then the superintendent gets together with her strategic planning committee, she comes up with the plans to meet your new goals. The board discusses the superintendent evaluation results, and at that point, some of these things are happening at the same time, you collect data on compensation in the market for superintendents that are similarly situated with Oak County. And then the board discusses the superintendent evaluation, makes a retention, non-retention decision, and makes a compensation decision. And this isn't talking about Mrs. Byrd necessarily, it's talking about Mrs. Byrd now because she's a superintendent now, but it's also the process that I think would work 10 years down the road when you have somebody different. And instead of my standing up here at this, well, I'll be dead by then, instead of somebody standing up here and saying, yeah, she did a great job, and saying, yes, I'm sorry for you, but I'm having to report that, you know, there's this issue, there's this issue, there's this issue. And you may be making a non-retention decision then, after that. And then the plan gets rolled out, it gets implemented, and you start the cycle all over again. And if you're doing this right, you're going to have been here, at the end of this year, I am confident that you're going to be somewhere around here. And then you build upon that through the strategic planning process, and you make progress to here, and then progress to here. And quite frankly, I don't think we've done that. Part of the reason has been that lack of consistency in the superintendent's seat. But I think this is your opportunity to say, yeah, this is where we draw the line. From now on, we're going to get incrementally better and better and better.
And in the future, even this first part would be done later. We wouldn't be doing this in May.
You can do it later, sure. There's no need to do it this way.
Right, no need to do it this early, okay.
The only thing is, when the renewal of the superintendent's contract would occur, and the reason why we're doing this now is because you're going to make a decision about the superintendent's contract before you get to go through all of the rest of this process. And if the attorney says, there's no problem in setting up her contract, the superintendent's contract, so that it renews October 31, let's say, you could pull something out of the air, instead of June 30, then you can do both after you've got all the data. If you've got to make a decision by June 30, you could continue doing part one and then part two later. It makes life more complicated if you have to bifurcate it like that. Any questions about the process? And I have prepared a proposal, which I will send to the board later electronically, so that you can look at how this could play itself out, and then you can make a decision if you want to go that way, if you don't want to go that way, because you have a firm proposal. Any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Frehhold.
By the way, I'm going to have this also sent to you electronically, and everything we've talked about today.
Time line, very helpful.
I guess, I'm sorry. So as of now, we don't have any more process. laid in, we will get a chance to adopt that or not adopt that, that's what will happen eventually?
Right.
But if we don't adopt, adopt it, we just don't do anything, right?
No, I think you're gonna get your chance to tweak it a little bit, a little bit, retreat.
All right, so that'll, that's, that's something we'll, we'll address, okay, great, that's cool, thanks, sorry.
I'm gonna take a break. Take a break? Yes. Okay. I think we're gonna do a fifteen minute break, no, fifteen, ten. Ten, ten minute break.
You've all received in soft copy, but it is not attached to the agenda, so I wanted to bring down, to make sure you had in front of you, I have two folders, and I asked you to take a copy from each one. The first one is the current contract, and I'll, and I'll start that around with, with Mr. Townsend. The second one is the draft contract, which you received in soft copy over the weekend. Thank you. And just to, to, to use a volleyball term to set this up, you have a, the, the current contract with Mrs. Byrd, which is dated twenty-six April twenty sixteen, requires you to review it no later than one May with the superintendent, and determine whether to extend the contract. I know you've had previous conversations about extending the contract, and general direction about terms, we've attempted to incorporate those in the draft new contract, which would be effective one July twenty seventeen. There are a couple of, the language in the contract should be familiar to you, you've seen it in previous superintendent contracts. One provision that I would, that I would like to go over with you, this is, this is not what, what some people would refer to as an evergreen contract, it is a contract, it, it is a three-year contract, it's not reviewable, the first year, it's reviewable at the two-and-a-half-year point, so you would, it's a three-year contract, at the two-and-a-half-year point, you would review it with the superintendent and determine whether to extend it for another three years. Thereafter, you can, you can, you can review it annually, but it's a three-year contract, renewable for three years. Yes, sir?
Mr. Bridges, I, so, the, the clause that indicates that we can terminate with, without cause, would then limit the payout to, I think, twenty weeks, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Twenty weeks. However, it, it appears, please correct me if I'm wrong, that if the superintendent order was dismissed with cause, and it was subsequently determined that, that was done incorrectly, then the superintendent would get the full contract payout.
That is, that is the language, and it's been in a, in a previous contract, and that can be, it can be negotiated. What that essentially tells me is, if, if there's, if, if there's a termination for cause, it needs to be pretty ironclad, otherwise you just terminate for convenience and you have a, and you have a twenty-week payout.
Well, it seems to me that if there was a termination for cause, and it turns out that it, you know, was not correct for some reason, and there was no basis for that, then one of two things would happen, the superintendent would be reinstated, or B, would be terminated for cause, which it seems to me would refer back to the prior paragraph.
We can, we can do that, it's something that would need to be negotiated with the superintendent, but we, but that's certainly something that could be, could be included.
I, I would offer that we would want to do that, because I mean, if, if it was that serious a situation, then I think we would want to be in compliance with the intent of state law.
Certainly, and, and generally speaking, if, if, if an employee, or if a superintendent were terminated for cause, there was a hearing, and the hearing officer said the cause was insufficient, at that point, there's generally a parting of the ways, with, with superintendents, you would not generally see that position reinstated. So, with the superintendent's concurrence, we could, we could write language in there that would, that would say, in the event the administrative law judge ruled against the recommendation, that the, that it would simply become a termination for convenience with a, with a twenty-week payout. That, that is, that is something that could be negotiated.
I think we've had some, I think we've had some challenges with public perception of, you know, things, as you, as you're well aware, and I would hope that we would do something more consistent with our state legislation.
Certainly, and that, that's very doable, and I would, with respect, my, my observation is that typically, if there is a, an issue with conduct, unless you've got some, some pretty heinous criminal activity, I would expect that most school boards would take the termination for convenience route rather than termination for cause, unless there's a, you know, if you've got something egregious that, that cries out for it. I, I don't, I don't recall the last time in Florida that this took place. Mr. Harris?
I'm referencing what Mr. Wilson was talking about in B, with cause, line seven. If I'm understanding it right, that is not with cause. It is only if the with-cause accusation is unfounded. With cause, there's no payout.
Correct.
That's correct.
But this is no cause.
You know, what, what we could do is we could, we could add language that says, if a, if it is determined by the administrative law judge that there was not sufficient cause, right now, the way the contract reads, she would not have a right to be reinstated, she would simply be paid off for her contract.
Correct.
We could, we could negotiate language in that says, if the administrative law judge says that the cause is not adequate, then it will be treated as a termination for convenience, and the payout would be in accordance with the statute for terminations for convenience, with severance package twenty weeks.
So for cause, there's no payout.
So we, we could do that.
I would say we have, we should make it within the statute, I mean, we, we, I don't know how we, how would we get around the statute if we left it, the language in?
Well, as it's written, technically, that is not severance pay, if, if you're addressing severance pay, you have to do it, what this is, is if there's a wrongful terminate, or a termination that, that is determined by the administrative law judge to be insufficient, superintendent can't come back, you know, for, for obvious reasons. But I think that it would not, it, it is certainly not inconsistent with, with Florida law to negotiate that language in.
I thought that that wa- I thought the state statute only allowed twenty weeks.
If you, if you, if you're referring to severance pay, yes, the way this language is calculated, or this is included, it is arguably set up in such a way as to avoid being referred to as severance pay, it really amounts to contract damages for, for contract termination that was, where the cause was insufficient. But it, it certainly, it would not be.
Wouldn't be inconsistent with state, with state statute?
It would, it would not be, if, if, contract is a negotiated item, and if that is what, what the board wishes, it is not inconsistent with the statute to, to, to treat it like liquidated damages and say, or, like severance pay, and just say, if the, if it is determined that there is not sufficient cause, then the termination will convert to a termination for convenience, and the severance pay provisions allowed under law apply.
Okay.
So what are we doing here?
If, if I, if I might maybe clarify a little bit, look, I'm not an attorney, I don't play one on TV, but, um.
Did you stay at the Holiday Inn Express?
I, I did. So.
Is your, is your picture on taxi cabs and billboards?
Not yet, I'm waiting for the, I'm waiting for the payment for this.
Maybe a milk carton?
Um, but, there are two different issues, one is contract law, and it's, our state legislature can't violate that, that's contract law provision, so you can write it to a contract, but their intent was twenty weeks, and, and I'm just saying, I, I would like for us to be in the part of the intent of our state legislature.
I would, I guess, I would probably counter that their intent is if someone is wrongly accused of something, or wrongly seen to have been fired for cause, and a independent hearing officer says, no, there was not cause, then that's a damage to that person's reputation, it's a damage to their, and that's when, so I mean, I, it's, you know, I, I don't think of it co- I, I guess I agree with Wes, that I think probably it's not a question of severance, then it's, it's more of a question of damage. I don't know, I, I, it's, 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 it's not a deal breaker for me, I, I would be happy to reduce it to twenty weeks.
Well, I mean, we, we could very well believe that there was cause, and the judge says, no, that doesn't change, that wouldn't change our opinion.
But that doesn't matter.
Well, no, but what I'm saying is, we, you're still, you're, you would still be, your intent would still be to dismiss the superintendent, even if, I mean, you would still be saying, look, we, this is not a superintendent we want to continue in our district, so then it, it becomes for cause. The superintendent can still sue you, or if, if there's.
Damage.
Damage to their, to the reputation. It's not a, that's, I don't see that as being a contract issue, but I'm just saying, I think that.
There's, there's, there's clearly a strong incentive, if, in, in any school district, if there, if you come to a point where there is a parting of the ways, there's a strong incentive for that to be for convenience rather than for cause, unless, once again, you have some heinous criminal allegation that is brought that, that simply cries out for it, but, but that is, the reason we're bringing this here to you today, this is, this is a draft that, that we have negotiated, and if, if the board wishes changes to be made, now is the time to do that, and the final contract will be brought to you in May or June, certainly before the end of the contract term.
And let me be clear about this, I don't perceive this being an issue with Superintendent Byrd, but this contract is the same contract that's going to be enforced, probably, because very few folks are gonna look at this again for maybe twen- ten or fifteen or twenty years, so you, once you set this in motion, you probably set it in motion for many years to come.
Yes, and, did you have?
Obviously, but, I mean, I think, to me, the important thing is having a with-on cause.
Yeah.
With, with respect to Wes.
Oh, absolutely, I understand.
I, I would like to see that in yours, too, but.
Happy to negotiate.
Sure, sure you are. The, I think, to take it out of the realm of the abstract, we didn't even try, or we, this board did not even try to prove cause with cathodroid, so whatever, whatever you had in there was not cause, wasn't even worth trying to do cause, I mean, that was a, a termination or a resignation for convenience. I think cause has to be north of that, and so, I guess, from my point of view, it's not really worth fighting over, but, but I, I will, if, if Jackie wanted to agree to the twenty-week reduction, I think that'd be an incredibly generous gesture on her part.
The other, the other change that I would point out to you is.
Let, let him finish.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, it, it, I, I was, I thought we had exhausted that conversation and we're moving on. I apologize.
We are, I have a totally different question.
Oh, okay.
Are you ready for that?
Sure, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item six, adjustments to compensation.
Yes, ma'am.
The way it's always read is that the superintendent's compensation is fixed with the term of this contract, and then if it is extended, shall receive the annual increases, blah, blah, blah. However, here, we're saying right from the get-go, superintendent shall receive annual increases of no less than average annual increase received by administrators, blah, blah, blah. Is there any reason why that was pulled out?
Yes, ma'am, the, I think the, my, my recollection is that the fixed compensation had, had to do when we entered into the annual contract, the one-year contract with Mrs. Byrd. This language is similar to what we've had in the past, if you would like, you can, you can certainly negotiate that it is fixed with no, with no increase, or, over the, over the three years, or.
Not, really not saying that, somewhere in between, I don't feel that there shouldn't be an increase, but I do think that needs to be done at the time that the evaluation is completed, and then a recommendation made there, but I don't know, have we always done, I can't, I mean, I've been, always been?
I, I, I think so, we, we can certainly make an adjustment to that.
We have an ability to adjust it on a bonus basis, if you really make sense.
I got that, I got that, I was just saying, I mean.
Yeah, this.
Go into a year, and you've got goals set, and the goals aren't met, we're still gonna get an annual increase, really? I mean, I, I, I don't understand that, but I, I'm asking.
We can, yeah, we can certainly. We, we can certainly negotiate something different.
What'd you say?
Peanut gallery.
My question is somewhat related to hers. The new contract has the same dollar amount for compensation as the original contract, it should not, because the original contract has had an increase, Mike, did we not have an administrator's salary increase last year?
This current year, no, the year.
But that, that would impact this contract, would it not?
The.
It should not be the same dollar amount, because it would reflect this year's increase, assuming there will be an increase at some point in time.
Well, and, my, and, and I'll, I'll be happy to verify this with Mr. Prun, the way the original contract was written in April of twenty sixteen, that was to run through June thirty of this year, the salary for that year was two twenty-five.
But it's adjusted.
My, my understanding that it is currently two twenty-five.
Oh, it, it says it's adjusted each year.
It will be adjusted.
After that.
Uh, one July twen- after one July twenty seventeen. I believe that, I could be wrong, but I believe the, I believe the current.
Says annual increases, I just read what it says.
The, the current salary is two twenty-five, and the adjustment was beginning July one twenty seventeen, there would be annual increases equivalent to what was received by, by administrator.
And nobody's receiving one this year, so.
It's only if.
Not if.
So, so, at such, beginning on that day, past that day, should there be an increase for district administrators, the superintendent would also be entitled to receive it?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That, that doesn't mean on that day.
No, it just means, beginning on that day, what, whatever, whatever increases the, and, and if the board were, were to approve an increase in, in September that was retroactive until July one for, for regular employees, I would expect that it would, it would, it would apply equally to the superintendent.
But not under the current contract.
Right, the current contract is.
Goes through.
Is different, because you, you wanted a one-year contract, so we didn't include that provision.
Okay, thank you.
There, it would not have been, logistically, it would not have been possible during that one-year period.
Thank you.
The, the other item that, that was changed, the superintendent indicated that she wished to forego her, the automobile allowance. There, there are generally two ways the districts handle that in Florida and elsewhere, one is by automobile allowance, the other is by affording superintendent a vehicle owned by the district, a fleet vehicle, and rather than taking the automobile allowance, the superintendent suggested that it might be more economical to, for the district to provide a vehicle for her, and then, and eliminate the, the vehicle allowance provision. You will notice that, that it, that the fleet vehicle includes the maintenance of the vehicle, and the fuel, and the service.
Absolutely.
And the insurance.
Let me commend you for that.
I, 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 I agree.
And, and we, we currently, we, we currently reimburse her for insurance, because we require her to carry a large liability policy as long as she's operating her personal vehicle, so we're currently doing that, so.
So, are you licensed to drive a school bus?
She'll have to look into that one, right?
They wouldn't park in the neighborhood.
No.
Keep parking in the neighborhood.
Yeah, just need to make, make sure that her route ends, ends in a Barto school, so that.
But that would be fun, though, to drive a school bus in front of her house and see what her husband says when he. As a joke, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Robbie Davis, are you listening to this?
He's cringing back there.
Sorry, Rob. Okay, so Wes, what are we needing to change?
What I will do, Madam Chair, is I will have a conversation with the superintendent and suggest language that has been requested by the school board, and, and get her, once again, it's a negotiated item, and so I'll need to get, get her reaction to that, and whether she agrees or not. And once we have resolved that, presumably amicably, I will. And once we have resolved that, presumably amicably, I will circulate a final draft that includes those provisions.
But still bring it to vote today?
We have to vote tonight.
No, ma'am. You don't... No, sir. The contract says you need to review it with the superintendent and decide whether to extend. You have done that. The contract does not have to be brought to you today. The current contract does not terminate until 30 June. So it can be brought to you at the May school board meeting for approval. You have... The contract required you to review it and determine whether to extend it. So I believe that you have met that contractual obligation.
Yeah, I wanted to personally thank Wes for the week in work, trying to make sure that... Because we get a lot of back and forth on this one, and so...
Well, I'm delighted and will be happy to bring this to you at the May meeting for your approval.
Thank you. All right, so now we are at a point of looking at the agenda for today's board meeting. And we have quite a few special recognitions today. No matter whether we have any speakers, we have two sets of minutes to approve. We have one new administrator. And then starting with the consent agenda, C-15 through C-17. Yes.
Looking this over, Madam Superintendent, is there a chance we can find some of these funds for Oneida Elementary? They desperately need some help with some security important.
Oneida. Oneida Elementary.
C-17.
C-17.
I know they've got... They do have some new fencing, and thank you for that. But I think they could benefit from some additional security cameras as well.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the business services contract, R-72 and C-18. Donations, C-19 through C-44. C-46, excuse me, C-45. Facilities, C-46 through C-59. C-60 through C-62. Yes.
I noticed on C-62, we're looking at purchasing thirty portables. I also noticed information on the bid recommendations. The very last one looked like that was portables as well. Are they both for the same? Is it two different sets of portables? How...
No, ma'am.
Tell me what that last thing is, then, underneath the bid recommendations, then, the modular units.
I don't know if Lynn's in here, but I know that we adopted Swanee County's bid.
Yes.
And that is, I believe, the agenda of the adoption that bid, purchase of thirty portables that are going to be used at Barto High School and then district-wide.
So the two are tied together, is my question?
Yes.
Okay, it is the same group, not two different sets. And can you give me an idea of the thirty portables that you're looking to purchase? Where are you going to be putting those?
At first, we'll put most of those at Barto High School for the master plan phase one.
Okay.
And then they'll be there through phase two, God willing. And then they will be distributed through the county where needed after that.
So I guess my question, then, is, we have schools in my district at least that desperately need portables. So I didn't know if some of these were being allocated for them? Or do we have other ones on site that can be used for schools starting in August?
Yes, and we'll have... Anywhere that there's been a request for portables, they'll have portables. They may not be the brand-new ones, but they will have portables that have been gathered and stocked already.
Okay, wonderful. So this is really for the Barto master plan?
Yes.
All thirty? Okay, thank you.
All right. Human Resource Services recommendations, C-63 through C-65. And Mr. Bridges, can you explain the process as it relates to the item... Trying to get the number. Administrative instruction recommendation for termination?
Oh, the item having to do with the recommendation regarding Mr. Troller.
Yes.
If you look at the letter that Mr. Troller was served, the penultimate paragraph reads, "You have to write your request to hearing before the final action is taken by the school board. Such request must be submitted in writing. If you request a hearing and the recommendation is adopted by the school board, you will be suspended without pay at the April 25, 2017, school board meeting pending the outcome of the hearing process." Mr. Troller has requested a hearing, so your action today will not be to terminate. Your action today will be to suspend without pay pending the resolution of the hearing. After the hearing, the hearing officer will be an administrative law judge of the Division of Administrative Hearings. And they will issue an order. It will come down to you, and you can either adopt it or, if there are exceptions, you may consider them. And then at that time, you would take action on the termination. Yes, ma'am?
But according to this, that's not... It's not written that way, correct?
What is not written that way?
In this, at least as of last night, it was not written to that effect. It was written as a termination, not as a suspension.
That is how it shows up on the spreadsheet. It is a recommendation for termination. However, he has requested a hearing.
Right.
And if the board approves the superintendent's recommendation, the effect will be suspension without pay until such time as the board receives its order.
I understand that, and your communication's been clear, but I think for the public, that's...
Yes. Yeah, I... I know there seems to have been some confusion about that. This has been the district's process since time immemorial.
I understand. I'm just saying, we're moving forward, so...
But this one... Yeah, this one... And I have met with Mrs. Porteous and Mr. Warren and talked about the possibility of clarifying our processes there so that everyone can understand better. But what due process requires is if someone is recommended for termination, they request a hearing, they're suspended. They don't have to be suspended without pay. Most districts do that. You suspend them without pay pending the outcome of the hearing. And then when the final order... When the order comes in, you take final action on that.
So it shouldn't be on there tonight, right?
It should be on there today for you to approve the superintendent's recommendation. And the letter that was served on him clearly indicated that if the board... If the recommendation is adopted by the school board, you'll be suspended without pay pending the outcome of the hearing.
Mr. Harris?
I think to clarify, and I think I'm getting this right, the board votes on termination. The employee has the right to request a hearing of that termination vote. And that's what has taken place pending our vote this afternoon, correct?
If the hearing... I'm sorry. If the employee does not request a hearing, then you would be voting on the superintendent's recommendation to terminate. And that would be final today. Because the employee has requested a hearing, what you vote on today is to approve the superintendent's recommendation to suspend without pay, which also requires action at the school board. If you take... If you touch a protected liberty or property interest, and certainly an employee... When you take the first nickel, an employee has due process rights. So it requires board action to do that. But the vote today will be to suspend him without pay pending the outcome of the administrative hearing. We need to clarify that in the way we communicate it in our agendas.
Yes.
But the letter that's served on the employee is legally sufficient and conveys that, provides the employee with notice. And the action of the school board today, you will not terminate Mr. Troller today. You will adopt the superintendent's recommendation, which is, if you request a hearing, you'll be suspended without pay pending the outcome of that hearing.
So the hearing is a protest of the recommendation, not a protest...
It does.
Not a protest of the board vote.
Now, the... Mr. Troller...
The board vote to terminate.
Yes, the superintendent has told Mr. Troller in writing that, "I intend to recommend your termination. If you challenge that, you have a right to a hearing..."
That stays everything on termination.
"...before the board takes action on your termination." So what will happen, since we know he has requested a hearing, when the board takes action, if you adopt the superintendent's recommendation, what will happen is, number one, he will be suspended without pay forthwith. Number two, the Division of Administrative Hearings will assign an administrative law judge. They do not do that until the board takes its action. As of right now, the superintendent has not yet been advised when the hearing might be. The administrative law judge has not been assigned, and they have... They may be aware that he's requested a hearing, but they're not going to sign the administrative law judge and set a hearing date until the board takes action.
Okay.
So once he is... Once the board takes action, if you adopt the superintendent's recommendation, you'll be suspended without pay. The hearing will be scheduled, will be held forthwith. And as soon as the recommended order... I have to look whether it's a recommended or final order. When the order comes in from the administrative law judge, it will be placed on the next available agenda for the board's action.
Okay.
It says here on the spreadsheet, administrative action pending.
That's the action.
But the reason is termination dismissal by board, and that's not what we're doing.
But that's the reason. But the action is what we're taking. We're voting on the action.
Pretty easy fix to this. Can we just add a column or two to the spreadsheet that says...
Right.
Has requested a hearing. I mean, I think it's a record keeping thing.
Yeah, we've had that conversation, and we will... Our HR department will address that.
But we're not going to be opening ourselves to any retribution for voting on a spreadsheet that's a little misleading.
No, the item is the letter that was served on Mr. Troller.
Okay, I just wanted Mr. Bridges to explain that because it seemed there to be some confusion on it. Thank you. All right, going back to the agenda. C-67, we're going to discuss that in the work session in a few minutes. And C-60... I'm sorry, C-66. C-67, let me go to the regular agenda. We have R-68, 69, R-70, 71, and then R-73 through R-76. Yes.
Madam Chair, I have a question about R-74 and R-76, and I'll start with R-74. This is the purchase recommendation for magic math. You know, my area of expertise is not K-12 education, so I don't want to challenge anyone on this. But one of the things I do hear from our teachers is there seems to be a lot of change in the programs that we ask them to learn and implement. Is this a new program that we're asking them to implement that changes something they already do?
So this is a school program for middle school math. We've already been utilizing it in some of our schools. This is just a continuation of that. It's thinking math. It's a good program. We just want to continue with that one.
Okay, thank you. And also, I have to ask this question. I'm sorry, did I...
Which one are you talking about, Mr. Wilson? Which, the 76?
R-76.
Okay.
This is the purchase of Renaissance?
Yes, sir.
And I just have to ask the question, is this a new cost or is this already in our budget?
This one is a new cost, as we've discussed before with paring down the district required midterm and end-of-year assessment. What we're looking for is a research-based, reliable, and valid method by which we can progress monitor reading and math. That's what this tool will be used for. And when we're looking at this, also, some of the costs that you incurred, that schools were having to incur by purchasing this themselves, we're now covering it at the district. So before, maybe, schools haven't purchased AR. We're providing that at the district. We had some of the star Renaissance at K-1, 2, and 3 to progress monitor art and literacy. But we're going to do this so it'll be a continuum, K-8, where there won't be any ambiguity between whether a student is progressing in our primary grades to middle school grades.
So it's not a new cost. You found these funds by terminating other programs. Is that correct, or...
No, some of this is a new cost. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that it's not a new cost. Some of it is.
Do you know how much of it is a new cost?
No, sir, not right offhand. I can find that for you by the board meeting. Put some of that in that question form. I wasn't prepared to answer that.
I'm a little concerned about that because we, you know, we have... We're in ongoing negotiations with the PEA.
Yes, sir.
And I would hope that we could hold the line on costs until such time as we... We hope that we can renew funds from the state of Florida.
Keep in mind that the funding source that we're going to be utilizing for this, some of this could not be utilized for other sources. We would be utilizing some of this with the offsetting, when you look at the cost that we had with creating tests for assessments or making a test that we were progress monitoring before within our middle school or elementary. Some of the, what we call the district made midterms or end-of-years. But what we want to make sure is that we're having the necessary tools for principals and teachers to be successful in progress monitoring. So this is really an essential part of putting those systems in place, K-10, for progress monitoring reading and math and providing the art and literacy pieces, so.
Well, I guess the question is, could some of this money be used for other things, like teacher salaries, for example? I mean, is this going to be an ongoing cost?
Yes, sir.
So then, the question is, could some of this money be used for teacher salaries?
Is some of...
Now, this is instructional material. I just cannot... I have to think back exactly what we pulled in the funding.
Okay. That's what I was going to...
Yeah, I had to go back and exactly figure out what we pulled in. It took me a second. Sorry.
That's okay.
Here's a quick question.
On the Fort Meade Middle Senior, where they're naming their baseball field after Andrew McCutchen, if they have people here, when we vote on this, can they come up and speak to him about him? Okay, I'll find out before, but just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
And I also have one with Haint City as well.
Sixty-nine.
So...
Okay. R-77 through R-79. Yes.
Madam Chair, this is just a procedural thing, but we need to pull out Gateway from there, please, because I can't vote on Gateway. R... Excuse me, R-79. I'll need to abstain from voting on that.
And that's why you basically say that before we vote, correct?
Yeah. Yes, but this is... We're voting on this as one item. So if we could have staff pull that item out and renumber it, I don't know, Mr. Bridges.
Each one's voted individually.
Oh, okay.
Right? Isn't that what Wes told us last?
Typically, they are.
Each one's voted individually, because I have one that's going to be voted differently, too.
Okay, that's fine. We're voting on them individually.
Yeah, it says motion to vote on the following individually, I mean, under the recommendation.
All right, and then the next item is public hearing, the policy updates, and rezoning of Lake Alfredo there. Anybody have anything on those items?
Well, just what I said this morning.
And Carolyn, she's here.
Now, when we get to these items, Ms. Jackie, you're going to have someone to come down and talk about...
The rezoning.
About these.
The rezoning, Carolyn Bridges would be here. Wendy is not here for the policy. She's still in Tallahassee.
Wes can do that, right, Wes? You can do the policy update?
She gave those. And Carolyn Bridges is here, and she can actually answer some questions. She has an item coming up in information. If we can get through, she can start addressing some of that information here in work session.
Okay. All right, and then Ms. Jackie's report, and Mr. Bridges has a couple of items. And then we'll be... One, the court members reporting will be done.
If I might take just a moment, the two items that I have are a little unusual. The first one, I don't typically come to you asking for authority to sue someone. But we had a driver who, as a result of an accident, caused significant damage to one of our schools. The defense in that one was that there was a phantom vehicle. And the insurance company for that driver has declined to pay us. and the insurance company for that driver has declined to pay us. We, we believe that there is a significant likelihood that we will be able to succeed on the merits of this, and that, and that that, that defense is without merit. So I'm asking for authority to, to file suit to recover the da- the value of the damages to our building caused by the insurance companies insured. So I'll bring that to you. The second thing you, you see once in a while, but as you know, Holland and Knight represents us as bond counsel in financial transactions. Other, other offices, other attorneys with Holland and Knight represent everybody in the world. So whenever they do one of these, they will typically bring us a request for a conflict waiver with their assurance that, that there will be the appropriate walls in between and that, that there, that there will be no involvement by someone whose interests would be adverse to the district. So you don't do this frequently, but you do it routinely when we have it come up. So I will bring you a request for a waiver of conflict in, in an upcoming transaction. And, and that's what I'll have for you this afternoon, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, so we're done with the agenda. Ms. Jackie?
Okay. The first item up is Mike Prohm with the budget discussion for seventeen, eighteen school year proposal.
So we have a couple of handouts for you. We wanna give you an update on the budgeting. And Ms. Sellers already touched on some of it early in the, uh, in our comments, and we're gonna go over that a little bit more. I'll wait till the handouts are out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So we're gonna, the first part we're gonna go over is the sum, the page that says summary of two thousand seventeen, eighteen, House and Senate plans. As you know, we're getting towards the end, well, hopefully getting towards the end of the legislative session. And last night, we got a new update on the House budget. Didn't change much, but we tried to get those numbers in this morning, so you'd have everything up to date. I spoke to Wendy this morning, and she wasn't sure where, where it was going right now. They, they haven't even done appropriations in the House and the Senate. And she said if that doesn't happen by midnight tonight, they probably will not get this done on May fifth, when they're supposed to get it done. And that, she's not sure whether it's gonna be continuation, just keep going, or one might leave like they did two years ago to come back at a later date. Hopefully, that won't be the case, but it's not looking that good that it will be, they'll be done on time. That being said, the, the sheet you have is just an update on the House proposal and the Senate proposal. We tried to summarize this. We usually give you a sheet that has great, great detail that gets kinda bogged down, so we tried to summarize it a little cleaner. As Ms. Sellers said, the DCD was lowered again in both proposals. So you'll see that from the current sixteen, seventeen column to the current column down on the DCD, it goes down. And again, if it goes down another year, we'll be in probably around ninety-six point something, so ninety-six cents on the dollar versus we're spending ninety-seven, but it just continues to go down.
That's the House proposal, but the Senate went up, right?
Well, the, the reason, you're seeing a net. The Senate went up.
Yeah.
But then came back down with the DCD. It just went up much more than the House, and we'll go through. You'll see in my yellow and green colors there.
Right.
So the House is a net increase of thirteen point six million, and that is mainly, both of them, it's mainly due to growth and the fact that we are projected to have more FTE. It was relatively flat, their budget. And then in the Senate, there was a larger increase. The DSA is up a hundred and thirty-four dollars, but again, it was higher until the DCD ate into that. But their total FTE dollars is twenty-nine point three million. And then you, the board usually asks the question about discretionary versus growth. So we have a column there. You'll, you'll actually see the net increase for the House proposal was negative two hundred and two, because it actually went down, but the, the amount was mainly due to the seventeen hundred FTE that were being projected. The second piece is on the bottom half, which is the third line from the bottom, which is the required local effort change. And the House has lowered that, so there was no tax increase, and they did a rollback of the RLE, which absolutely kills us. And then the Senate had a slight increase, and that's where you see the eight point eight million. You know, I talked to Wendy, and I, and I don't understand this one, but she's trying to help me throw it to them. Losing sleep over this one. But I, that is a local, obviously, the local tax, that if they would just let that go, it'd be a more, a good increase, and that we could handle that. So there is a push to have them soften on that, and hopefully it will.
So that, that is the equivalent of proposing the rollback rate for schools?
That's it.
That's what they're doing?
At eight million, yep, exactly. So if you go to the second sheet. I wanna start with, and I, and I talked to the superintendent today, see if I could get some consensus. I'm gonna vary off this a little bit. The top number projected beginning fund balance of thirty-six million in the top, that represents a little over five percent. That's what we're projecting the fund balance to be. And I know we're towards the end of the year, and we're, you know, a point two, if it's five point two that we're projecting, going from point two, five point two to four point nine is a very small swing in, in ending fund balance. If we, at the end of the year, when we're closing the books, happen to unfortunately come into a situation where it's gonna be four point eight, four point nine, the board policy says that you'll be at five. And we can make a journal entry from the capital fund to the general fund to make sure the board meets their five percent. I just wanna, that'll happen somewhere between board meetings. And I just wanna know if it is the intent of the board for me to have that authority to make that transfer. And we'll update you as it's happening. Hopefully, it won't happen. Hopefully, it will be over five percent as, as we've been projecting. I just, that's only a million, million and a half, and on a, you know, a large budget, that's not a, that's not a big swing when you're doing final journal entries and stuff. So I just wanted to throw that out before I go into the next part of the budget process.
What, what would you perceive as being the worst-case scenario if you had to transfer the funds from the capital budget?
In terms of dollars?
In terms of dollars.
I would say it would be more than two or three million. 'Cause you're talking, that's about a, close to a half percent on the three to seven million per, per. And I, I think we're gonna be okay. I just wanted to throw that out, 'cause some things happen towards the end that you just don't foresee. Your revenue coming in a little different at the end.
Now, we did agree not to transfer. We were one-time transferring the eight million.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna talk about that, too. Yes.
We have not been doing that recently.
Two years.
For two years. Are you, I know you're gonna get to that, but are you proposing that again? No?
Oh, yeah, well, I would like feedback on that. We're gonna ask that. You'll, you'll see how it'll fold into it. It's the, again, the board's call on that. So.
Mr. Harris.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is, is this dollar amount, or this fund balance, is that including all of the lapse money from employees not being hired? And we're still coming up short, possibly?
Possibly, 'cause you remember, and Ms. Fields mentioned this several times, and we're gonna talk about that. We budgeted laps. We took fourteen million from, and so when we did that, we brought the projected fund balance to about five point four. And that's coming in pretty close to what we said, so it's gonna stay right around that five point two, five point three. But in the past, we wouldn't have budgeted that, and then it would grow to two percent throughout the year. We kinda took a gamble on that, that we were gonna see that lapse the way it worked out. It's not the way I would like to do it, but that's what we did, we lost this past year, yes, sir.
While you, while the district in prior years didn't budget laps, laps was always a part of the fund balance, forever, ever.
Correct.
Yeah, that mean, that has.
We, we had enough that we didn't need to budget to get to the five, yes, sir.
Right, so whatever you're into, the school districts, any fund, fund balance was, going back to the beginning, five, always included laps.
But the moral of the story is we should've saved more money in order to meet our five percent obligation to ourselves.
Well, you're five percent. That's what we agreed to do.
Now, he's saying we might come in to under five percent.
I'm just.
Ms. Sellers and Mr. Townsend.
So if the House were to, if that budget were to be approved, we would get forty-five dollars less per pupil, on top of getting ten dollars less per pupil last year? Is that what I'm reading? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, you are reading that correctly.
Yeah, changing the DSA.
So, once again, we're getting, I mean, I know we're getting more money 'cause we're getting more pupils, but supposedly, we're spending that money on the pupils. How bad is that for us? That amount of money per pupil, less, once again, two years in a row, getting less per pupil?
It's not good. And it's masked a little bit because of, again, the fact that we have these seventeen hundred FTE coming in at that six thousand nine hundred and forty. So it looks like we're getting, and we are getting more revenue.
But we're spending it on, we have to have classrooms, teachers.
Exactly.
I mean, it's still, we're having to deal with less per pupil.
Yeah, you'll see the impact when we get down to the bottom, and then we can talk about how to handle that. So we start with the two thousand sixteen, seventeen revenue there at seven hundred and twenty million. And I brought those color-coded, the yellow and green numbers from the front sheet, the thirteen point six and the twenty-nine. That's the new.
That's okay. Mr. Townsend had a question after you said.
I was, I was just gonna ask, I mean, I know the five percent is a thing, but is it, didn't previous board do that largely in response to guidance from the state? I mean, they're like, where are the states putting pressure to be in, at that kind of, of level? And my point of saying that is, you know, they're imposing the rollback rate on us. They're imposing no lo- no local option on us. I'm just not hung up on five percent if it's, if, if, if we're trying to be, you know, I, I, I don't care if you do the change. Four, four point eight is fine, fine with me. I agree, I'm not in the majority of the board on, on that, but, I mean, the, the state could fix this if they choose, choose to.
Ms. Sellers and Ms. Cunningham, Mr. Harris.
I don't know that the state, I tried when I first got on the board to really understand what would be a responsible fund balance. This was from experts, not state people. And it was, five percent is not a huge amount. It's, it was explained to me, it's where you draw the line in the sand. Anything below five percent is not being fiscally responsible to your district. It is not a huge fund balance by any stretch of the imagination, but it's where, when you have to go out, 'cause we have no money to bond. It's being fiscally responsible, and it is, it was where experts said you should not go below. And that's, that's why we put it in policy, I believe. And once again, it, it's not this luxurious fund balance. It's trying to be fiscally responsible. And it really, the state, the, and three percent is not the recommendation of the state. It's just where they come after you and take you over if you go below it. It's when you're in real trouble. But that is, is, is where I'm coming from. I'm assuming others have heard the same thing, and Lynn Wilson is probably our expert, and.
You're under expert. I, my, my.
On the board, I meant, I know.
My take on it would be that if, if we said we were gonna go below five percent with the size of our budget, that Mr. Prohm would probably lose a lot of sleep. It's a, that's gonna be a real challenging position for us, a difficult position, because the state says you can't go, go three percent. That's where you draw the line in the sand. And we, so we don't want to really be anywhere close to that, in my opinion.
Ms. Cunningham, then Mr. Harris. Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say, is that the state requires, and if I'm correct, also, our auditors, right, the auditor general? Don't they wanna see us at three percent?
Yes.
For a fund balance? And that's really what's driven the three percent. Then we went out through financial advisors and kinda asked, you know, what's a recommendation? Three percent, if you go below three, you're really cutting it close to be there every year. What would be a comfortable place to be? And we settled in at five and actually made it board policy, 'cause it wasn't up until that point in time. So yes, it's a fluctuating thing. Is it five point two, four point eight? I personally wouldn't lose a lot of sleep over that, but we have to set the parameters someplace so that we have a target to work towards. And I think something else to consider is, should there, God forbid, be some type of a emergency or whatever, that we would be hit by a natural disaster of some sort that would give us not a lot of cushion, but certainly something to be able to repair schools and do what needed to be so that our classrooms could be intact? So that was kind of the reason why we predicated it on five percent.
Well, let me just say, I mean, we're dealing with an irresponsible state that, that is unwilling.
Excuse me, I was next, please. I don't look at this as a state issue. Three percent is what the state says they will come after you if you fall underneath that. I get that. That's kinda in the back of your head. I look at this more like what you do, your household budget. You don't want to have a household budget that does not have a growing savings account. This is our savings account. This is our rainy day fund. We are self-insured, multi-millions on property. This is what this is for. When we have a natural disaster, some kind of thing that we have to have millions of dollars for, this is the fund that we tap into. We do not want to have this to be a static number. We want it to be a growing number. That's the concern I have, it being stuck at five percent rather than seeing us have an increasing savings account. Thank you.
Ms. Townsend, then Ms. Fields.
Well, we have an existing crisis in supporting our middle schools. We have an existing crisis in supporting a lot of schools that are actually active now. I mean, I mean, it's not like we don't have actual, you know, natural disasters of a sort going, going on right, right now. And I guess the point I'm really trying to make is, we have an irresponsible state government. They're unwilling to let us fund ourselves. Matt, Addison, I hope, I hope you write that down. You know, I'm, they, they set the thing at three, three, three percent. I'm not gonna fight you over five, but I'm also not gonna urge you to fix, to, in, in taking the four point eight million, or the, the, the four point eight percent going to five, what are you taking that away from? What's, what's, what's the, what does that come out of?
The board, the past two years has, we did a capital transfer, allowable transfer from the capital to cover expenses, capitalize expenses that were paid for out of the general fund. And it was eight point four million per year. So we, because we had needs in capital, we stopped doing that. And what I'm asking is, if I need a little bit of that eight point four that Mr. Davis hasn't spent, if I can move that, it'll just, it'll satisfy a policy that the board has, that they will end the year at five percent. And the board could always waive the policy for a period of time if they need it, bless their nerves.
The board's policy, they can, they add the discretion.
But they wouldn't have to do this, and it'll be at the end of the year, and it would just be a journal entry, and then it would actually, superintendent's communication with the board, we would update them. And again, I'm hoping that doesn't happen, but it's just so close, the number right now, that I don't want it to be.
Ms. Fields.
And I guess my question would be, and by doing that, what will be affected by? And I guess my question would be, and by doing that, what will be affected by the capital?
I'd have to ask Mr. Davis, if, you know, there might be a project that he had that came in a little bit under, and that would be what we would use, so we'd say, no, but then it would be something that he would use, wouldn't be able to use for the following. And so I'd have to ask him if, and, and again, we don't know what the number is, but I don't think it would be taken from a current project, it would probably be something left over in, in excess of something he budgeted for that came in a little lower.
And I think at some point in time, we need to all agree on this lapse thing, because.
Well, yeah, we were going to get there.
We really need to talk about that, and, and I had mentioned this before, and Mr. Bridges, I would like for you to do a little bit of research, because I was told by a board member from another school district that it is not legal for us to use our lapse funds for what we're doing. And I, and I don't want an answer right now, but it's come up a couple of times, and I just don't think this is good financial planning on our part.
Mr. Wilson.
When we agreed not to move the eight point four million, and we ran, you know, in capital, in capital fund, we also agreed that should we run into this situation, that we would revisit that and then use it for that purpose. I, I would like to see us not be in violation of our policy. I think that's important, that we comply with our, our policy, and, but, it's, I'm not sure it's a general, I mean, I hear you saying that, but I mean, you're act, you're moving funds that they won't have access to, right? So, it's, it's a real movement of money, but I think we agree to that. I think that was one of the stipulations we agreed to, when we said, okay, we're going to leave those funds in, in capital budget, but if we needed them, this would be a, a reason we would use them. I think that was what we said originally, I think.
Yeah, otherwise, why have a policy? So, yes.
Yeah.
So, we, I mean.
So, if we look at, we could just take the House budget and walk through that. We, we carried over that thirteen point six million.
So, are you, so is the direction clear then?
Oh, yeah.
If you, okay, if you would move the funds appropriately to make it five percent, okay, or at least this round?
So, let's walk through the, the House budget, and what we're projecting on the, now that we have the revenue and what we have for expense, and we'll play this out. So, the total revenue goes to seven hundred and thirty-four point six million. We have our normal transfers in from other funds, if, one example is the capital transfer coming into the general fund. So, we have available revenue for seventeen eighteen of seven hundred and ninety-eight million, nine hundred and ninety. We're projecting a level service budget of seven hundred and seventy million there for, and then through the process that we, we talked with the board a little bit about in terms of going through the budget and the staffing throughout the, the district, we have a staff savings of two point seven five, two, two million, seven fifty. We've asked the departments to reduce their budgets, operating budgets by three percent, which is a savings of seven hundred and eighty thousand, and you see the total there, three point five million. We've had some fixed cost increases that we have to account for. In our plan to the schools, based on the increase in FTE, the operating costs that we will send to the schools is, is minimal, but it's a hundred and ten thousand, based on the new F, FTE. We're assuming the legislative action on the FRS, the increase is going to go to four point four percent, so that's a one point three million dollar increase. And then you heard a month ago about the health insurance, the, the self-funded plan needing sixty-five days of reserve. This isn't even the full amount, but it's enough, I think, and I think we had, I think we had a bad year. I'm hoping that we don't have as bad a year as we did in there. And I think we'll be okay with that. So, we have a total ending fund balance of, if all that plays out, of twenty-seven point nine million. The fund balance, a five percent fun, fund balance, is, would be thirty-nine point nine. And again, this is now what we would budget out, and that would be your beginning, fund balance would be the twenty-seven nine. You'd be short in the budgeted. We have, as usual, always added to that throughout the year through the laps. So, Ms. Fields, this is, we, we put the money back in. We didn't do what we did this year in this scenario. And by doing that, that's why you're twelve million short. However, you could, if the year's passed, that's what normally comes back in laps, is about fourteen, fifteen million. Again, you're living very close to the edge, but that is, again, probably the worst case scenario, because the House is the worst. And then we did the Senate the same exact way, carrying down from the twenty-nine million, and with that, the best case scenario, even in not putting the fund balance, uh, budgeting out the fund balance, you would have discretionary funds of three million. Again, not great, but it's a heck of a lot better than what we've been in, you know, have in the past and had to budget for. In talking with Wendy, she, she's confident that it's going to come in somewhere in between those two, that's what they're going to be fighting about. So, we just did an average on that third column, and again, while we're short in meeting the five percent in the budget, now, again, but this is the beginning, when we would sit in July in the budget book, you'd see that four point four fund balance, which will grow hopefully over five during the course of the year. But, again, we don't, we still don't know a lot right now. We have to bring you, we owe you staffing plans, based on all the work we did, so, based on this, we're looking for if there's more direction in, in terms of savings, or come back in May with hopefully final numbers, but Wendy's saying that if they go to extra session, we might not have them on May sixteenth, and then it's hard to make decisions, I understand, and that's why we run into this budget issue every year, but it's the world that we live in.
Mr. Harris.
Mike, you mentioned departmental operating budgets. You asked them to reduce their operating budgets in each of the departments by three percent.
Correct.
I'm asking the hypothetical, because I think that's where some of the legislators operate, and it doesn't sound like a whole lot. But we look at seven hundred and twenty-one million dollar general fund revenue projection. And if I'm sitting in Tallahassee, and I'm sitting there thinking, well, you know, three percent reduction in your budget is not a big deal, it's not going to make you go bankrupt, you're not going out of business. Well, that's going to be twenty-one and a half million dollars. If I understand the seven hundred and twenty-one million, if we took three percent of that.
Yeah, well, if you're doing it that way, what, what we did was just on district office.
No, I, I understand, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the big picture from Tallahassee, and said, well, three percent is only twenty-one million dollars. Polk, you ought to be able to absorb that. So, I'm asking you then, if that were to be some kind of a conversation, and I think that that's probably in their thinking, that that's not unrealistic to ask people to make a one to three percent tightening of the belt, we would not be in Polk County able to absorb a twenty-one and a half million dollar without reducing personnel costs. And two ways to reduce personnel costs, reduce people or reduce salaries. Am I missing something, or is that a, a fairly basic evaluation of what would happen to us?
That's accurate, very accurate.
And I think that's the way some of them are thinking in Tallahassee, unfortunately, and it doesn't sound like a big deal to cut your budget three percent. But when eighty-three percent of your budget's going to personnel costs, you can't spread the twenty-one million dollars among the other seventeen percent of your budget without stopping your operations.
And most of that in school.
And Sullivan.
These figures have no salary increases in, these figures that we're looking at with the fund balances and how they're coming.
No, ma'am, that would be, you would, you would plug that in down in that bottom, where it's a school operating increase, FRS turnaround, we have that line. We believe we'll have the turnaround covered through federal funds again, so we're okay there, but if, if we need to start supplementing out of general, that's where you'd put that in, and same with salary increases.
Mr. Wilson.
I actually have a question about information items that are, February financial packet, Mr. Pitts, it seemed like there were some pretty significant variances in there, I'm assuming there's just timing issues?
Yes, most of those, most of those variances are because of timing issues.
So, we don't have anything to be.
No, no, we're not going to be alarmed about. Just, I just want to make a couple of comments, that it's, it's a minimum of ten percent is what most government and financial experts say. Five percent, but that's a thirty-six million, that's one month of payroll. So, that, just to put that in perspective, that's how little five percent is, just one month of our payroll.
What's the average in school districts, roughly?
It, um.
Ten to twelve, I mean, I've heard.
Yeah, that would be high.
High?
Uh, there's some that, or, or.
Sure.
There's a rule, I don't, we don't like to use them as an example, but they're, they've been coming down for the last three years. Some of the ones that had some larger fund balances are coming down, because there's no way to continue to sustain.
Sure.
But it was in the five to ten range was probably average, and we were right there at seven, three years, three years ago.
Three years ago, right.
We just had less to cushion, come down.
I know, I know.
So, Ms. Phil, are you asking for direction?
Well, in the staffing, yeah, I mean, we're going to bring pretty much a level service staffing plan, which would fit these numbers, and if we're okay with that, we're going to try to look at some reductions if we can through making positions in that throughout different departments, but I don't think it'll be a substantial amount.
Mr. Wilson.
Did I understand you correctly? You, it seemed, you seemed to suggest that you were asking for folks to finally to cut to three percent? So, you're not bringing it level, you're actually.
Well, yeah, no, I, I'm sorry, I started with level, but then we, three percent, but again, the three percent on operating, you see it only, and that's a seven hundred and eighty dollars, because we don't really have a large operating budget in the district wide.
Is that three percent represented in here somewhere?
Yes, the seven eighty in the department operating, and the second.
New item.
Under, says staffing.
So, if we were to hold the line, I mean, it could be a little, without taking those cuts, it could be a little more challenging still on the fund balance. Well, have we made those changes? Can we hold off of those till we actually know?
We just asked them, Mr. Pitts asked them to submit what it would look like, what your plan would be, and they have, and they have not acted on it. And, and again, the way you're thinking, the same thing, if it came in the House, if it said it was more towards the Senate, we might not have to do that.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to, we have Tom here and Aaron, are they here? There they are. Uh, with the COLTS program, item number nine, so I'm going to flip them. I had Melissa's on charter. I'll flip them, because they've been waiting patiently.
They have.
We have it on ours, two times.
What's that?
We have it on ours.
You have it on yours? Perfect, okay. Well, I can't see it. So, while we're waiting on Tom Phillips, the executive director of the Citrus Connection in Winter Haven Area Transit, and this is Eric Kilibrue, our director of government community relations. I think her mother's also a principal at the Blufflin School that you're talking about today, and her daughter, Sam Kilibrue, the legislator, so interesting conversations today, got to hear that. So, I'm here today to talk about our relationship that we have with you, which is unique. It is a public, public, public partnership with you all. It's called the COLTS program. It's the Community of Learning Transportation Service, and what it does is it offers free rides to all twenty-five thousand high school students that are in Polk County. They have access to be able to ride public transportation, thanks to a funding arrangement with you all. We are one of only two public transportation and school boards in the country where this is federally approved. The first is Rochester, New York, and just to put that in perspective, their entire high school population is seventy-five hundred. So, then you look in Polk County, and we're at over twenty-five thousand, where the other is federally approved. Rob Davis has been made aware, and I can't thank Rob enough, we're working with him. There will be two other school boards joining us this year in a, in a program like this because of what we've done here in Polk and our partnership in Polk, and that is in Hillsborough County. You may have read that Hillsborough County is reducing their two-mile bus transportation, they're no longer able to afford that, so they're rolling out this program, and Tallahassee is, is loading a program with that, a program like this as well. So, it was identified in, thank you, in early two thousand and thirteen, that a service gap existed, specifically with Haynes City High School. If we go to the, the next slide, which says establishing a need, we were contacted by the Peace Group in identifying that there were many residents and students who lived in Haynes City, went to Haynes City High School, who were having to walk back from after-school activities, because there was not a bus service available. We had many reports that there were children actually walking sixteen miles to be able to get home from program. And so we partnered with Rob and the school board, and in the fall, the summer of two thousand and thirteen, we identified under your direction, three hundred transit-dependent students over the summer. And we worked with their parents and the school board for this three-hundred-person pilot to transport those students over the summer, so that they could get to from summer enrichment activities. Most notably, we identified schools, students at Harrison School, who come from all over the county, who are able to participate in summer programs, and so we were very excited with that. We got great results, and then we rolled from the pilot project, we rolled into a full program in two thousand and thirteen. So, all twenty-five thousand high school students were cop, were able to do this. They filled out a parent permission slip. I hope Wes gets back, I'd like to talk about that permission slip in a moment. But we saw approximately sixty thousand rides that year. So, these are students who predominantly took the big yellow school bus to school, because it was much more convenient, but then were utilizing the COLTS program to be able to get home from after-school activities, so that you all didn't have to run as many activity buses, or more important to us, students who weren't able to participate in those after-school activities were then able to do that. How were the students able to ride? They turned in a parent permission slip to the school, and then we applied a sticker, which is now a, a stamp, to the school ID, so the students are able to show that ID. That signals to the driver that the student is able to ride for free. Now, in Polk County, children over the age of eight can already ride the public transportation bus system without an accompanying adult. That surprises a lot of people, but we do have nine, ten, eleven, twelve-year-olds who ride the bus without their parents to be able to get to programs in school. If they have an ID and it doesn't have that punch, because they're not covered under the COLTS program, we don't deny that students board. They continue to ride, they just don't ride fair free under the COLTS program. So, we got some great publicity there, and the reason that we're here in front of you today, if you go to the next slide here, is predominantly because we have seen a significant decrease in the number of students riding the COLTS program. In two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, we. In two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, we saw just north of, I want to say, seventy to eighty thousand rides. And right now, we're down to about thirty to forty thousand rides. And we feel that is predominantly because we and the staff have taken our eye off the ball a little bit. That first year, there was lots of media attention, you could see in one of the slides when we were on Vay News Nine, we received national media attention, we were on the radio. It was new and fresh to the schools, the school resource officers and principals were pushing out the information. We had marketed information that we provided you, and, and then in subsequent years, we really just relied on that first year's success, and so we've seen the steady decline in the COLTS ridership. You're still getting a very good value for your dollar, you're paying less than the market rate for the rides. That being said, given our suburban poverty issue and many of the issues you discussed today with students coming from all over the county, we know we need to get back up to that, those two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen numbers. I'd like to see them go even higher than that. And we've added some service since we started the COLTS programs. You may know we had a failed transportation referendum, we had to reduce our service, but then we've also been able to increase our service as well. Mr. Small has been contacting us for years about doing something out at the airside campus. We now have a route that runs out to the airside campus. Mr. Townsend contacted us about Travis and having some bus service, Ridge, sorry, Ridge, thank you. Ridge and having some bus service out there, so that bus service will start in July. And so we have some new offerings that students may not be aware of, that we really need to push the COLTS program out there. What are some things that we can do? I know we're crunching for time, Ms. Killibrue brought some videos. We've, we've increased our, we've changed our brand and our logo. So we'll be getting trifold brochures out to the schools again, and working with, I can't believe you guys scored Marissa Green, that's great, but we'll be working with folks like Marissa to get the information back out into the schools again, because I think we really need to have an awareness. One, yes, I'm sorry.
On the sheet, where, the northeast Polk area, which would be Haynes City High School and Ridge Community High School, which, I don't know what L A M T D and W H A...
Thank you, thank you.
Which one is which group?
Sure, so...
Where are we?
So, we're all one now. So, so the east side of the county is served by WOT, which is...
WOT.
Winter Haven Area Transit.
That's what I didn't know that meant, thank you.
The worst public transportation name in the history of the world, WOT. However, they're served by...
So lowkey in the WOT.
And the four sixteen, or the four twenty-seven service that area. The Citrus Connection services the west side of the county.
Got it.
Ostensibly, it's just a branding issue, it will all eventually be the Citrus Connection.
I just was wondering which one of those columns is our area.
Eighty-eight percent of all of your school locations are currently served by public transportation, whether that be thirty-minute service in some cases, or unfortunately ninety-minute service in some cases.
Eighty-eight percent of all the high school?
Of all of your school locations, yes. That's one of the, that's some of the information that we have provided Rob and Superintendent Leroy to really get you to be able to buy into the program, to see if we already service your locations. So where are the two oppor, or three opportunities that we see for growth that we wanted to discuss with you today? And Rob may have some comments as well, is number one, we're going to rebrand this, we're going to refresh our brand, and we're going to make sure that you get the materials, as well as the YouTube videos. One's gauged towards the parents on how to ride transit, what you need to accommodate your kids to. The other is a, a student-centric video that tells them about riding the bus. The second thing is, is we have discussed with Rob, I think it's time to have a junior high pilot. We have a middle school pilot. We have delivered over a hundred and fifty thousand high school rides for you all over the last three years, and we have not had a single incident on the buses, not a single one. I believe that the sweet spot, where we can really impact students' education is in middle school, because these students don't have access to driver's licenses yet. They're the ones that if mom and dad can't get them to after-school activities, they, they, they can't participate. So I think a junior high pilot, based on the three years of, of safe, reliable transportation, might be a good idea. And the third is, is to really possibly revisit the permission slip. Three years ago, riding public transportation in this partnership was an unknown. However, as I stated, children over the age of eight, whether you stay with the high school program or move into a middle school program, they can already leave a high school or middle school, head out to the bus and get on that. We assume all the liability, you do not. And so if it would be possible to just revisit whether or not the permission slip is necessary, then these students already have their, their badges. It's a simple education process, they don't need to get a permission slip to take home to mom and dad, to come back in, to have something punched. Again, we assume the liability to us if there's something we can change in the contract to make you a little more comfortable. We believe that the permission slip may be a barrier to access to these kids being able to get on the bus quickly, especially those first few weeks of school where they need a new permission slip. We have some students who started riding as freshmen, who are now seniors, who literally have four punches across the bottom of their badge, so we're counting. Do you have three punches, do you have four punches? When was this punch given to you? So we, we believe we can reduce the barriers to access to that. So we just wanted to give you an update. We have new, new board members that are here today, and stand for any questions, and tell you how much we appreciate your partnership. Do, do we have a route from Haynes City to Pointeana? Yes. Okay, so what answer did you give us? That's correct. Oh, that's wonderful. Yes.
Mr. Townsend? I'm sorry. My conscience. I'm lazy, I'm gonna get this. I, I think we had talked before, a place that's seen growth in, in use of something similar to this is, is New Beginnings, right?
Yes.
And, and I think it's an example of how, if you emphasize it, people will use it. Can you elaborate just a little, little bit about what, what New Beginnings has done?
Sure, so, so we are willing to contract with them. The school board, choice schools, charter schools, for-profit schools. And so New Beginnings High School has an extremely limited bus transportation system. So they have been, they partnered with us shortly after the school board to transport the students to the Winter Haven campus, so we take New Beginnings High School students there. Then they opened the Lakeland Campus, they strategically chose the old McEe tires sales area because of its proximity to the Lakeland Terminal. Now, to put that in perspective, their student population is riding at triple the rate currently of your entire twenty-five thousand high school student population. And again, I think that falls on us as staff and school board staff, that we need to, to rededicate our efforts, because it is in the forefront of the New Beginnings students, because it is an absolute lifeline for them to be able to get to school. So that education is constant, where I believe with the COLTS program, with the school board, we've rested on our laurels a little bit too long. Our supposition, at least at the transit system, is the majority of your riders right now are actually juniors and seniors who started riding as freshmen, who know about the program. And then if we actually polled freshmen and sophomores right now, my supposition is that many of them don't even know that the COLTS program exists, because our marketing efforts were not what they were a few years ago. The duty is you pay a fixed fee, thanks to the contract we have with you all. So whether you have a hundred thousand rides or twenty-five thousand rides, you're currently paying the lower market rate for them.
Mr. Harris?
Wes, could you weigh in on the limitations that we have in terms of the permission, and is there a way that we can...
Yeah, I'd be happy to look at it, I don't, I, I don't recall the precise language of the contract. I'd be happy to look at it and, and see if that's a possibility.
Because we'd have to have some kind of permission for them to ride, but the challenge that you're facing in terms of getting enough kids to actually take advantage of the opportunity.
And again, Mr. Harris, we, when the bell rings at Harrison and students head to the bus stop, we are allowing everyone at that bus stop to board, as long as they're over the age of eight. The only difference between a COLTS rider that you're paying for and, and another student is that one's getting on the bus for free and one's having to pay. From our perspective and our attorney's perspective, we're assuming a hundred percent of that liability either way, because your liability ends at the, at the moment they cross that, that threshold at the school.
Legal liability, not PR liability.
Correct. And the question is, is if the contract already opens that liability, again, the incident's going to happen on the bus.
Miss Sullivan, say, Mr. Townsend?
I understand high school, because high school kids, once they get out, they get in people's cars. We don't have permission for them to get into their friend's car. They get home a variety of ways that we really don't supervise. I don't know about middle school, if we add middle school, because we're a little more protective of our middle school kids. But I'm thinking a permission might be a checklist on something they already sign at the beginning of the year, because...
We'll, we'll look carefully to see what we can do to, to reduce barriers. As a practical matter, whether you're at elementary school or middle or, or high school, you know, we have, we have kids who walk across the street to get, you walk across a six-lane highway and then get in mom's car, and, and mom's theory is they're walkers. We, we do the very best we can, but as you know, from time to time, there are accidents, some, sometimes tragic results. But I'll be happy to, to review the contract, see if there are things we can do to reduce that barrier.
Mr. Townsend, and Miss Cunningham?
Yeah, I just, I just, to address Till's point, I, PR liability is completely irrelevant to me. The PR I want is more kids on buses getting to where they need to get. If there is no safety issue with that, if there is no legal issue with that, I would prefer there be no meaningful hurdle. I think the rules should be exactly the same as yours, that's my position. I don't know if, if that's going to be the same for the board, but PR, reality, I, I do not care.
Well, and if I may, one of our fallback positions, was we always ask for what we want and then have a settled position. One of the things that we had thought is, if the permission slip was still needed legally, or, or Mr. Harris from a PR perspective, could it be done at freshman orientation, stating that as long as you are in the school system, the Polk County Public School System, for high school, by signing this permission slip, you are authorizing your student to be able to ride for their high school career, and then at least they don't have to do it every year. My supposition would be if they're transit-dependent when they're freshmen, then they're probably going to be transit-dependent when they're a senior, and then we only have to do it once in their career. Even that would reduce the barriers greatly. And then if they transfer from McLaughlin to Harrison, it's, for us, it's seamless, just get on the bus.
Miss Cunningham?
What I would like to suggest, I thought about it when Hazel mentioned doing it, the beginning of the year, every year, every child usually gets a packet sent home of a myriad of things that you have to look at, initial check-off, sign, you name it, it's in there, if that was one of them, once again. And like you said, if it's on file with our transportation department of some sort, because that's the way to reach, at least make everybody look at it and say, oh, what is this? Really, you can ride? And just a quick synopsis of what it is, how it works, your eligibility, and at that point, a parent would sign, send it back to the school, and then it gets disseminated. But again, whether you choose to do that annually, I, I don't know, or from liability standpoint, or do you do once in your school career, I, I don't know how that works. But I would think in those packets, that would be the way to reach everybody.
Now currently, we provide a quick reference manual every year to the schools that has that information, has the COLT, COLTS information, and along with that permission slip, to the, to every school.
To the school, I'm saying to go with every child's packet.
And that, and that's for...
To enhance that, to get the word out, because that's...
And that form is supposed to be taken out of that manual and go into that child's packet.
Well, I have never seen that.
I guess we need to...
I've never seen one.
What, what we can do is just like we do to media and photo release, those are separate documents that go out.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
And we can, we can have that as that.
Add one more in there.
My recommendation would be to do it each year, because sometimes parents change their minds, so we don't want to lock them in, so we have them to complete it like we do the media. The media and the photo release as well.
Yes.
We can put those in the packets. Miss Fields?
They can also go on our website, can it not? Is it on our website?
Yes, and it is on, it's on your website, it is on our website. The YouTube videos are on both of our websites, we try to make it as accessible as possible. And, and all the videos will be new, we got them here today, every loss for brevity, we probably won't show them. But I guess in, in summary, as I hear, you talk about how tight your budget is and your, and your operating capital, so just please keep in mind that our, our buses are a sunk cost. They're passing by your schools as early as six fifteen in the morning to seven fifteen at night, five days in. Anything you can do to pack the students on our buses and, and save money on the big yellow school buses and put that into the teachers and the curriculum, please know that we are here for you. Really, today's about, this is a underutilized partnership, and, and we have responsibility for that, and, and staff has responsibility for that. As much as we can do, please load our buses up, we want them to be standing room only, that's a good problem for us to have. So, please just keep that in mind as you, even when you plan summer programs. Look at where our transit frequency is the most, plan your summer programs there, and, and let's get those kids registered for COLTS, so that you don't have to pay drivers to, to do those particular runs and help out with your budget where I can.
And it's good for kids, bottom line.
And Grady is, is last year Sheriff Judd, and I assume he'll be this year, he picked up the cost of Saturday and Sunday transportation. The first year of the contract, and I believe the reason some of the rider members were hired, was because Superintendent Leroy included Saturdays in that first year. Subsequently, she dropped the Saturdays due to budget concerns, so moved to Monday through Friday. However, the sheriff and, and our law enforcement community has picked up the tab on that. So, the, the weekend service is being covered by another entity, so keep that in mind as well.
Mr. Townsend?
I hate to belabor this, but what are, what are we protecting with the, with the permissions law? I mean, what are, what, I mean, what, what is it that we imagine we're, we're guarding against? If, if, if they're taking all liability and kids can already get on the bus, what, what is the...
We will look at it to see if we believe, if we believe that transfer of liability is adequate. Waivers of liability are not, not, they have to be expressed, and they're not popular with the courts. So we'll look at it and see if the waiver is adequate to protect the district. As, as you know, we, we are frequently, some of our, some, some, we're sued from time to time. By the numbers, we're probably sued more frequently in connection with accidents, with bus accidents and incidents than anything else. If we're, if we're putting students on buses that are, that are not driven by our employees and where the students are not being supervised by our bus drivers and paras, there is, there is the potential there, you're putting a student on a bus with, with people that we don't know. So we, but we can look at that and see if, if we believe the, the language is adequate to transfer liability or whether we're still on the hook.
Have, have we been sued since this...
We, we have not, in connection with the COLTS program.
Mr. Harris and Miss Fields?
For the benefit of those of you who were not here in two thousand and thirteen, when we instituted this, this received a resounding support and endorsement from the board. We were very encouraged and blessed that Tom brought this opportunity, and I think it helps both of us. And you're absolutely right, you have a sunk cost when you buy that bus, and if you don't fill it up, it's really dollars lost. And we need to do whatever we can, now that we've had this pilot experience, to reinvigorate our marketing, but also if there are any barriers, to remove those. I still think and feel that this board is enthusiastic in its support of this program, and any way that we can expand its outreach, I'm all in favor.
And that's what I was going to say, Mr. Bridges has gotten directives. I think everybody around this table is in agreement, so now he just needs to do what he needs to do.
I will, I will meet with Mr. Davis and, and with Tom or his folks if, if they need to be at the table, and we will look at that.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Now we'll move to the Polk...
Rob, would you, uh, Rob, would you set that up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We'll now move for the Polk Charter, um, request for application reconsideration.
Move for German. I just...
Give you a second, right there.
Okay.
Hello again. Have there moral support this time?
Your bouncer?
Yes, yes. So, oh, and my other bouncer.
So, to me, you keep them both at our place.
I'm bringing before you today a request to reconsider an application. I'm going to read the summary that was presented in the E-Agenda handout you should have in front of you just for the, for the media to reference, so that I can do this in a chronological order so that everyone has an understanding of why this has come forward and what this is all about. So, the charter application for Polk Charter Academy was originally denied by the Polk County School Board on September twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen. The denial was primarily based on the following argument. Pursuant to Florida Statute one zero zero two point three three, the application submitted by an applicant deemed as high-performing charter school may be denied if the application does not material, materially comply with the requirements in paragraph one zero zero two point three three six A. The applicant made a material misrepresentation in stating that the Florida Educational Foundation, Inc. had the legal authority to submit the Polk Charter Academy application as a high-performing replication of Winthrop Charter School. The applicant is replicating Winthrop Charter School. The applicant states that the Florida Charter Educational Foundation, Inc. is a Florida not-for-profit corporation and will be the governing board that operates Polk Charter Academy. corporation and will be the governing board that operates Polk Charter Academy. Evidence indicates that Winthrop Charter School is governed by Bay Area Charter Foundation Inc. Consequently, the Florida Charter Educational Foundation does not have the legal authority to submit the charter application to duplicate Winthrop Charter School, a school in which it does not govern. The school appealed to the state, and on January 17, 2017, the State Board of Education granted the applicant's appeal. The Polk, Polk County School Board decided to appeal the state's decision, and an appeal was filed, so that's where the application sits today. On March 22, 2017, the applicant's attorney sent an email to the Office of Charter Schools requesting that the board reconsider the applicant's application and attached a revised cover page to replace the original. The revised document corrects the legal issues which were the basis for denial. So today I bring before you a request made by the applicant to consider their submission. As it stands, you may consider this request as an amendment to the application that is currently in appeal, or you may choose to acknowledge this as a new application. In doing so, you will need to waive your current timeline policy, which does not allow an applicant to submit amended information after August 1st, nor does it allow for a new application prior to July 1. However, this case is unusual one, unusual one that perhaps warrants consideration. Although the charter review team found some of the application criteria not meeting the standard, those items were not areas for denying a high performing replication charter application, which means had the applicant submitted the application under the correct legal entity, there would not have been grounds to deny the application.
Ms. Sellers.
We don't allow, our policy doesn't allow people to make amendments after they submit it, nor do we take new applications. So no matter which thing this is considered, I say we deny it based on the fact that if we start looking at things in the middle of the year, we open the floodgates to everybody wanting to add. Once we let somebody amend their application, then we'll be in this business year round, always having amendments, or always looking at charters at any time. So I would like us just to deny it, and I do believe we need to formally deny it because they're calling themselves a high performing charter, and if you don't do it within 60 days, it's automatically approved.
Ms. Cunningham.
What is staff's recommendation?
Well, we are bringing it forward to you to make a decision based on statute and policy. So the little thing that you would need to understand is that if anything that you would decide to do would go against what school board policy would be, so if you're going to stay within your policy, then you would need to make a vote dependent on the policy.
Okay. But I don't think, I don't think we've been in this situation before.
No, we have not.
That's the other thing. This is not the usual because of that one area. So help me navigate this.
If I may, Drew Crawford, for the bottom line, I'm the attorney representing the school district of the present appeals. You know, it's difficult to come up with a recommendation because there is not a, there's no, there's no guidebook on this one. The, it's an out of cycle, obviously it's an out of cycle document, however you want to phrase it, whether it's an amendment or if it's a new application. If the board wants to move forward with that, I think, I think what Melissa was trying to say is that you'll have to waive your policy in order to do that. So this is certainly an exceptional circumstance. You know, I don't think you're going to find another charter school that has these kinds of ownership issues when they're trying to replicate. You know, we certainly had discussions with the applicant. The applicant understands that this is, I think this is their first attempt to replicate Winthrop, so they understand the legal implications of what's happening here. This might be that one-off event that's worth waiving. You know, we certainly, as you'll recall, I don't want to go into details of our attorney-client session, but we certainly told you we expected something like this to come down the pipe. Here it is.
It may not be exactly what we expected.
Right, right, exactly.
There had been conversations with this applicant about submitting a new application that would cure the defects from last time. Our anticipation was, and they were advised that if they submitted it now, it would be out of cycle in accordance with school board policy. So you'll know, Florida law says that you, you must consider a charter application that is submitted by August 1st, that you can't refuse to accept one before then, you may accept them after that. Your policy says you will accept them before August 1st, but not before the first business day in July. So if this is a new application by your policy, it is not timely. And once again, if it is a, if it is an amendment to the prior application, historically you have not received those and accepted them after August the 1st. But as Ms. Sellers pointed out, well, before I get there, the reason to consider this is if you were to waive your policy on this and consider it out of cycle, it would likely moot the basis for the appeal. So it would save, save that expenditure. But in order to do that, you would have to do something that historically you have not done, which is accept a charter school application or amendment out of cycle. Where was, where was that going? Go ahead.
So, talk to me about the expenses if we don't set aside policy for this one change? Because we've already been denied.
Yes, we already, we already have, we already have an appeal in place. That appeal will proceed, and the cost will be the cost. If we deny it, again, there's the potential that they might, might appeal that denial on different grounds. But the one thing that I do want to footstomp that Mrs. Sellers mentioned is whether or, if you, if you agree to consider it, whether or not you consider it and deny it, or whether you don't wish to consider it, at your May meeting, I would advise you that if you do not wish to consider it, or if you wish to consider it and deny it, that you send a denial letter, because unlike garden variety charter school applications, which are deemed denied if the board does not act within 60 days, if it's submitted by a high performing applicant as a replication, and now arguably we have received, you know, they've amended it to change the name to an applicant that does have a high performing charter school, it's incumbent to send something that amounts to a denial so that they cannot construe it as, as inaction. Because if you don't, if you fail to act within 60 days, it will be deemed, it could be deemed approved.
We intend to file today motions in the appellate court to at least extend our appellate timelines to allow you the opportunity to meet these standards that are imposed on you, since like what Mr. Bridges was saying, the board's going to have to take action one way or the other. Right now, that's currently set for your May meeting. We have this discussion today to kind of work through some of these details, but we intend to extend those timelines, or at least seek extension of those timelines, so that we're not filing our briefs while y'all have this item under consideration.
Mr. Harris.
Sometimes, as a board member, you ask questions not for your own edification, but for the education of those in the room, and this is one of those times. Melissa, could you share with us a little bit about, this school is proposed to be located where and serve what population, and what will be its competition, or we will be in competition with it at where?
This school is proposing a K through A program that will serve 1,100 plus students in Shepherd Road, off of Shepherd Road. There's a fair property there that they've been looking at. It would be in direct competition with Sykes Elementary, which is right down the street from that school.
And the middle school they would be in competition with?
I don't know. Oh, Langton Highlands has, or Middle School as well, and Mulberry.
Mr. Lawson, then Ms. Townsend and Ms. Cunningham.
So originally, they filed an application that was technically in violation of law. They appealed to the state, the state granted their application even though it was technically in violation of law. We appealed, and now they've corrected the petition.
Well, let me put it a different way. They filed a messy application. They filed an application where the entity is not the entity of record. When you, when you look at the, at the records with the Department of State, the entity that filed the application does not have a high performing charter school. As a matter of law, I would, I would bet my bottom dollar that we were correct. As a matter of politics, the state board has the authority to do, to follow its own life. We made that argument before the state board. One of the state board members asked their general counsel, have you looked at this? And their general counsel said, that's not my job, it's a decision for you to make. So legally, we have an issue. So it was a messy application. The, what we have received now, unfortunately, does not clarify things because we were anticipating receiving a new application. What we received was something that couches itself both as a revision and as an application to be considered for the 17, 18 cycle. So we have to figure out what it is. What they filed now is, it clarifies the issue of who's filing the application, but it muddies the water further in terms of looking at, is this a revision or amendment to last year's application which would be late? Or is it a new application for the 17, 18 cycle which would be early?
So how is this different than our children's academy in Winthrop? I mean, they wanted to clarify a messy application, and we said no.
I absolutely agree that you're in a very strong position. If this is an amendment to the, to the last application, you're in a strong position to say no. Their argument, and the reason this is messy, is because they have also, they've used ambiguous language, and they could argue that in fact, it's a, it's a new application. State law says you have to receive it before August 1st. We have curtailed that by saying we'll accept it before August 1st, but not before the first business day in July. That is, that is another legal question that could be, that could be addressed, could be argued.
I would offer that we've established a precedent, and I don't see any reason why this is any different.
Just various random questions here. Is Sykes overcrowded? Do we have capacity? What is the current status of Sykes? Any idea? Say it, Tom.
I can have it, I can have it for you. I can get there now.
What, what are the consequence, I have a little bit difficulty following this. If we vote tonight, or whenever, we would vote to deny it, what's likely to happen?
Well, what we do, they may or may not appeal. They may turn around, based on the timeline, they may just turn around and file a new application timely and do it, or they could, they could appeal it. I don't know what their basis of appeal would be, but they can, but they could appeal it. So if we, if we send, if we tell them, what I envision at the moment, based on the information that Mrs. Brady has brought forward, I would anticipate a denial that basically says the basis is, it is, it is not timely filed, and we're not going to consider it. If, if it, if they appeal that, and if the state board wants to overlook that salient fact, the standard for approving a high performing charter school is very low.
So the letter of denial you were talking about?
Yeah, the letter...
We can send that, whether we decide it's a new application or it's a...
That is correct. What, what we would probably do, subject, subject to review and further tweaking, what we would probably do is draft a letter that says, your, your application will not be considered and is deemed denied. And that way, they cannot come back and argue that the board did not take action and therefore it's approved.
And so it's denied based on the same standing of legal...
The procedural, the procedural issue that it is, that it is, that if it's an amendment, it's late. If it is a new application, it is not, it is not right to be filed.
We would, we would not have reached the merits of the application.
Okay. So this cover sheet is all they sent?
Right.
The one, the one that identifies them, again, things for the edification of the crowd. The chair of this group works for something called the Profitable Group. Just want to make sure everybody knows that. I mean, this school is in the business of resource extraction, period. Let's deny it.
Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you. And I thought when Ms. Brady first introduced her, she indicated that had that legalese name been correct, we would not have, we would have moved, you would have recommended to approve that charter.
That's correct. There is certain criteria that set forward for a high performing replication, and like Mr. Bridges said, the standard is very, very low. So basically, when they hand the application across the threshold, unless their educational plan is just, just really upside down, their financial management has been proven to be upside down in the other schools that they've run, then, which is typically not at all what happens, because it is a high performing school that they are replicating. So there are, there are five different pieces of criteria that you weigh the application against, and the application that we received did not hit any of those except for the misrepresentation of information.
I'd like to add to, because you asked about the recommendation, and so my recommendation, Superintendent, would be to deny.
Okay.
Based on the fact that when this group approached us, we sat and met with them, we asked them, because I believe that the charter log is back to cooperating with the school district. I asked them to submit an application for Northeast Polk.
Where we need schools, right.
Where they chose to do that. I'm not going to speculate as to why they chose that area. That was not considered. They pushed that anyways. Whenever we met with them after the denial and the appeal, I brought that up again, and it's been kind of ignored, so. So it would have been a mixed review.
Mixed review.
And I don't know that as far as legally, what, that we can base a denial on that, but that would be my recommendation.
With the high performing charter schools, you only have a set few criterion that you can, you can legally reject one. This certainly though is out of cycle. They do know that there's a policy issue. That policy is soundly squarely before the seven of you. It's your, under your variance, your policies you adopted by NEOL, you would have to find special circumstances in order to do that, nor to waive it.
Mr. Harris.
Just to show the bias of the state of Florida in regards to this, when you look at it from a business perspective and you do a needs analysis, you would take into consideration the competition that is currently there, and the competition that is likely to occur sometime in the foreseeable future. And that is the fact that we have already purchased land and already made plans to build an elementary school just down the street, not more than a mile away from their location, is extremely close to Sykes. So we're already in the plan to build another elementary school. And yet they want to put it in one of the most affluent corners of the county and offer little if any transportation, thereby ensuring that the population is not going to be reflective of the community of Polk, just for the benefit of the audience.
And I, perhaps I can put a coda on the conversation. The balls are in the air and the plates are spinning in Tallahassee, and there are, there are, there have been a multitude of charter school bills. We don't know what's going to pass and what isn't, but the landscape may change, and we may or may not know by May 5th whether, when the, when the session closes, whether that will be the case. But, but it may be the decisions are being made in Tallahassee as we speak that will impact this, and we will, we will evaluate that as we, as we find out.
Ms. Fields.
And my comments would be, we spent 30 minutes probably talking about this, and at the beginning of the conversation, Ms. Cunningham wanted to know what the recommendation of the staff, and then Mr. Small gave us the recommendation, which was a good answer. And so in the future, if we could maybe, maybe the staff can feel comfortable enough to give us a recommendation, it doesn't mean that we're going to take it, but at least we will know what their thoughts are, because we wasted too much time on this issue, and we've got discipline cases in a few minutes. So just in the future, please don't be afraid to tell us what your recommendations are. We might not agree with your recommendations, but we're definitely willing to listen to them.
Ms. Townsend.
I mean, I, I agree that I would love to hear your recommendations, but I don't think discussions are a waste of time. I mean, I, I, I mean, I, this was important for me to walk through with the attorney and to fully understand. So I mean, don't blame them, blame us.
No, I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just making a comment.
Yep, consensus, right? Is that all you need? Yeah, you're there?
Yes, to take it to-
Take it.
There'll be an action item.
Yep, action item. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. The next item before you is item ten, it's a job description with Ms. Portius. I'm getting through it.
Just ask if there's any questions.
Okay. Looking at this one, this is the job description, that was the Senior Director of Public, Strategic Public Partnerships. We just went to, looked at the title of it, it's the Senior Director for Communications. Job description, we want to go ahead and have this one so we can post a position with there being some changes to that job description, if there are any questions for that, Ms. Portius.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Any more questions? No questions? Good job. Good job. There are several information items, I know. Item eleven is the FLDLE report. Are any questions of Mr. Davis on the report? Okay. Item twelve is post-state chain of Lake's Collegiate High School request for contract modification, fifty year contract from ten to fifteen. Are there any questions on that one?
Why do they want to extend it so long?
Melissa. Brian.
They are now high performing charter schools, so they have the broadening to request.
Thank you.
They know they're going to get resistance.
I'm sorry?
They do know they're going to get resistance, I hope.
Any other questions? Okay. Item thirteen, change the professional technical TRST position, this is a grant position. I believe it's Dr. Ates under that one. I'm sorry, Carolyn, you're back there, I see you. Thank you. Ms. Bridges, you can come forward because there was also some questions regarding Horizons. If you can possibly, I believe you heard the conversation earlier.
I did.
Elaborate on that. If there are no questions on the item thirteen? Okay.
All right, so let me talk to you a little bit about what we've done with Horizons. Because we think we've done some really good things and make sure that those children come in sixth grade. So as you know, in order to comply with the terms of the grant as well as all of our requirements here in the district, we assign students by random lottery. So we had to wait through the random lottery process, which ended in January and we calculated, and we still had some sixth grade seats. So what we did, if you remember, the Horizon zone was divided, so about half of the kids were going back to Lake Alfred Adair, but then we had some that weren't in the Lake Alfred Adair zone anymore. And so rather than say, we're just rezoning you to another school you're on your own, what we were, what we did was we created additional seats at Daniel Jenkins, so they will have, they will still have their lottery seats because they're full, but we're adding fifty-five seats at Daniel Jenkins, which means every sixth grader at Horizon now automatically has a seat at Daniel Jenkins. We can do that because it's after the lottery process, but before the next process will have this rework opportunity. And we did the same thing for the kids, the lower half of the students that were closest to Dundee Ridge. So what that means is, there are two hundred students, I met them all yesterday morning. We made slime and we made snow and we did bracelet work and all sorts of fun things, basically to get them excited about the possibilities at these magnet schools.
And for, for the record, I think we made slime at our house, too.
Had to test it on big kids first.
But, but the purpose was so that, because what I heard from the board was, we don't want to burden Boone, right? We don't want to send a bunch of kids to Boone. So this way, a hundred percent of the Horizon fifth graders have a seat in a magnet school. And we literally handed every one of them a color coded application. So we played the music, we gave away prizes, they all made stuff. And I don't, I didn't get a copy of whatever the parent sent from Horizons, but I will tell you, I had two hundred excited students about going to magnet schools. And I had about fifteen of them come up afterwards and say, I already accepted at Discovery, can I still go to Lake Alfred? Can I still go to these other schools? And of course, my answer was, absolutely, fill out that piece of paper and we will get you there. So Thursday morning, we're going to go pick up all of the applications. And they're of course incentivized because they turn in an application, they get to be in the drawing, every class gets a prize. And then we'll finish the enrollment process at Lake Alfred for those students. And the same thing is true for the Daniel Jenkins and those Dundee Ridge students that are at Horizons. We also, because the morning wasn't enough fun, we did the same thing in the afternoon at Lake Alfred Elementary. Hundred percent of them can go to Lake Alfred Adair so that we can fill up that sixth grade. And we're actually, if a hundred percent of them accept, we'll have more sixth graders than we need. But remember, we're doing away with the fifth grade, so we can fill the, overfill sixth grade a little bit and make sure that all of those students have a seat. We can do that this year after the enrollment process. We can do it next year if the seats aren't all filled. But if they're all filled, you know what happens when they start with the magnet school. So we're really trying to train our parents and we're bringing them all to Lake Alfred on May sixth, which is a Saturday from ten to two. And we're doing fun, hands-on activities and opening the new lab. But the idea is to say, apply right away, don't wait until we come and do a special offer with you, although the kids love the special offer either. But we really want them to get in the habit of filling out that application. But it's a new year and a new school, and so we really wanted to include them. So a hundred percent of those kids, we're trying to recruit them to Lake Alfred.
Okay. And just to speak about the parent, I know both of them very well, been up and spoke to the school three times here in the past two months. And overwhelmingly, everybody's very excited. The comments I've received and the thank yous for allowing their children after the process is actually closed, to be given those seats at Daniel Jenkins and so forth, is awesome. These folks have a third grader, not anyone moving up currently. It just seems so, first of all, the comment was that everybody's going to Boone, which isn't true to start with, so there's some misinformation there, number one. And then secondly, looking down the road, is hoping that their third grader when they get to fifth, may have those same kind of options. And once again, they of course will, because when they get to that open enrollment, they can certainly select. So it's just a communication thing to have with them and I'll definitely give them a call in the morning, so.
If you would, and if they need to, they're welcome to call me as well.
Sure.
But certainly invite them to come May sixth to Lake Alfred Adair.
So they can see the whole thing.
So they can see it.
I'll do that, thank you. Mr. Townsend?
This was a parent's, it's the sat chair.
It's husband and wife, yeah.
I know, I know, but it's still a sat, sat chair. That's, that's a pretty well-informed parent who apparently wasn't well-informed. And I, and I, well, I mean, I think that's, you know, you know, I just wanted to make that, I think I made, I think I made my point this morning. I, I'm supportive of the programs, I'm not supportive of the zoning and I don't, I don't-
But we're not zoning to Boone.
What, I'm just, generally, I'm-
That's what I'm saying.
I'm also unhappy about how far kids have to go to get bused to Philip O'Brien, which is, which is a long, it's, it's the entire thing. And I understand, we're sinking, we suck money into this, I don't, there's probably not any way to fix it, but I'm expecting to vote against this tonight. And, and we'll, we'll move forward from here, but.
And I just wanted to make sure you had the information. I, I'm, my goal here is not to influence, my goal is to inform. And certainly, we've had very successful parent nights. We did it first at Jewett before enrollment even ended. We've, we've had numerous invitations for these parents to attend. But of course, it's their option for this after the school day, if they wish, and if they can, I understand people have different work schedules, but we have, we've been very diligent about getting the information out. And we really believe that we can recruit not only these Horizons students, Dr. Elementary students, to the school, but that we can keep some of those FTE dollars from going to some of the charter schools and reinvigorate the Lake Alfred Adair program. I'm, I'm going to let Pam and Amy talk about distance, that's not my role.
And we really appreciate your, your question, Mr. Townsend, and also here's Mr. Wilson earlier about options. We wanted to take a moment, because I know we're, we don't have a lot of time left, to let you know that when the board votes to make a school magnet, those students who do not attend that school have to have a zone school to attend. So that's why the rezoning, we, we have to have a place to allow those children to go, those students to go. We spent a, a lot of time analyzing all of the options. We had everyone in the room you could think of, we had, the principals were invited and gave their input, transportation folks gave their input, were these viable options as far as busing for the students. We looked at every option possible and we really do believe that particularly with Lake Alfred Adair and its unique location, that these were the only options available whenever everything shook out. To take Lake Alfred Adair as an example, we did even look at, you know, what is the possibility of zoning some of those students to Dennison or Westwood? Well, Dennison and Westwood are also struggling schools. And the majority of the students that are zoned to the Lake Alfred Adair school now come from the Hain City area. So if we rezoned to a Westwood or Dennison, we're taking them out of their feeder pattern. They would go to Westwood or Dennison for a couple of years and then we'd be shipping them back to the Hain City area. So there were many factors that went into consideration to come up with these options.
Let me just say, I don't doubt you did the best you could, given the reality of what the program is, and that's why my original instinct was to vote for it, because it's already in motion that happened before me. I'm, I'm just explaining that after seeing some of the geography a little closer, it's, it's a concern for me. We, we just had a whole conversation this morning about moving kids around. You know, and, and it, and it concerns me when we, we do it the same way that it concerns me when, when charter schools do. So it's nothing against you, you guys at all, you guys did what you're supposed to-
No, now you're speaking my language when you start talking about geography. I work with the GIS system, which is what we took, we took a look at. The furthest student that attends Cumbie Elementary right now is out on Tinnerock Mine Road. The furthest house that we have away from there is out on old, old Cumbie Road, which is just a little further in the north. To give you an idea of the, of the distance, it's seven point four nine miles from that furthest student to Philip O'Brien. And that's turn by turn. If you'd like, I'd be able to show you on the map, if it's, if you want to see that, I can definitely put those in for you, give you an idea of the perspective.
And it also, while he's looking at that, if you look at the, the new Cumbie zone, the northernmost part of it is mostly-
You don't, you don't, you don't, you don't, you don't get to this. I mean, I, 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 it's, this is a philosophical thing.
Okay.
And I, but I will say, principals at two of the schools, I saw one of them be very concerned about it here, and I spoke to the other one.
And we understand.
And they're, and they're, they're concerned about it, and I want those schools supported.
We, we do understand their concern and we have committed to them to continually monitor this through the summer, to watch the enrollments and to keep them informed.
I don't, I don't want to hold this here longer than it has.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad that all, those are all our items today. We have discipline at four forty-five with no parents today. Lunch is in legal conference room, Edwina?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay.[1439.11]